Okay, guys, do me a favor and review the agenda. To see if there's any changes or whatever it is, so that way we could, you know. We could try to um, so that when we get to the point, it goes a little bit faster. Please.
I don't have any changes.
Thank you, Jared. It's like I need to add three more items. Jimmy, anything?
Um, I didn't see any. I looked over it before and it was fine.
Okay. So, okay. Hello, Joseph. Okay, so um. It is seven o'clock on the dot for right now. Um, so why don't we do this? I'll call the meeting to order. Um, and Jimmy, by the time you're done reading this agenda, give time for Luke to join us, okay? Make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so. Um, Melissa, don't move it too much or who's controlling the agenda in front of me, Melissa? Say you're Jared. Melissa?
Yes.
Is it you controlling the the screen?
Yes, I am.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, so I'd like to call the meeting, um, the work session to order. Uh, for today, Tuesday, November sixteen at seven P M. Uh, present currently, we have council members Tofus, council member Tarlo. And and we will be moving on to review of the agenda while we wait, um. You know, for uh, Luke to get here. Uh, Jimmy, can you do a fair reading of the agenda, please?
Yes. Uh, one call to order, two review of agenda. Three, presentation of building application thirty five oh two Bunker Hill Road. Uh, four, presentation on the development of the West Heightsville Queen Chapel Center. Uh, five, a presentation, the draft climate change plan. Six, presentation of the proposed budget counted for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Seven, opera discussion. Eight, police review and advisory board. Nine, uh, review and update the rolling agenda. Ten, presentation of October nineteenth work session. Uh, and November second legislative meeting minutes. Eleven, proposal to clo- go into closed session. Twelve, enforcement. We move ahead? We lose the mayor? No, he's here.
Hi Jimmy, I apologize. I I muted myself as I was texting uh, to find out where the third person. Um, our third council member was coming. Okay. So, um, thank you for the, for reading the agenda and seeing that there's some changes. I would like to move on to item number three. We have a presentation at the building application thirty-five oh two Bunker Hill Road. Um, this is not, um. Uh, now, my correct me if I'm wrong, this is not a variance presentation. So Alma, can you please present the the item? As well, uh, if you have any of the owners or architects, um, on the call.
Yes, um, good evening, mayor and council members. Um, today we're doing a presentation for thirty-five oh two Bunker Hill Road. Um, and the owner is actually present, Mr. Kobe Awemnisa. If I'm saying it correctly. And he's here to speak further about, um, the project that he's he has gone on.
Right, so Mr. uh, Kobe, you, uh, the floor is yours. Can you tell us a bit of what the. What is gonna be done to the house, um? So we could, um, we could better understand and the community knows what's going on with the property.
Okay, good evening, uh, good evening, everybody. Goodne- good evening, mayor. Good evening, co- council members. Um, my name is Kobe Awemoa and I am a real estate agent with. I'm a real estate agent with Fairfax Realty. I've been an agent for about eleven years. Um. I, um, uh, with this project, I'm undergoing or would like to, um. Rehab the property at thirty-five oh two Bunker Hill. Uh, street in Mount Rainier. Basically, it's, um, it's a single-family residence that I would like to rehab and keep as a single-family residence. Uh, it it's 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 currently has two bedrooms, uh, one full bath. In with three levels. I'm looking to rehab it to become four bedrooms, two full baths, um. Throughout the three levels. The major work there to be done is the underpinning of the basement, which means just creating extra heights. So that it can be technically, um, approved as a bathroom and a bedroom down there. Um, I've gotten my, uh, county permits. I've gotten my, uh, trade permits. I'm pretty much ready to go and I'm. I'm honored to be, uh, present with you, your council members and the mayor tonight.
Thank you so much. Um, I would like to open the floor to, uh, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, followed by Jared Stoffes. And Luke is working on logging in. He's having a bit of computer prob- problems, but he's trying to get in, trying to join the meeting. So Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you and thank you for working Mount Rainier. My only question is, is this gonna continue to be a a single-family residence? You talked about four bedrooms. Double checking.
Yes, it's continued. Yes, it's gonna stay as a single-family residence. That's correct.
Well, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, Jared, um, anything to add?
Um, yeah, no, thanks for, thanks for coming before us and thanks for, um, your work and and. Um. Uh, helping rehabilitate and, uh, this property in the town. So I don't really have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. So, uh, definitely thank you, um, for doing the work. Um, you already probably heard from Alma when it comes to the noise ordinance. I know work before eight o'clock because, uh, council members and, um. Will be get a called as well as the mayor and we do not enjoy those calls from residents, uh, not being happy. Um, I will also say it's like if there's any trees in the properties that need to be protected, please protect them. Uh, by either putting a netting and there's gonna be run off of like, uh, dirt. Be conscious that, um, a lot of our drains go straight to the Chesapeake Bay. And we are very green, um, and happy to be a green city. Okay, and if you have any questions, uh, concern, uh, go straight to, um, Alma rather as than, uh, being doubt. Uh, but we look forward to seeing and and please let us know when it's completed. We usually like, like to go see what, um. The work that you guys have done, so we take a, you know, a look firsthand what it looks like.
Awesome. Be happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alma, anything else to add?
Um, no, just, um, to make sure that I will be issuing the permit, um, tomorrow as, um, I mentioned to the owner. And all the information that is being shared today will be given in a PDF, um. As mentioned before, so that they know the ordinance for noise, um, how to protect the trees and everything.
Perfect. Um, thank you so much. Uh, council, that that's it for you guys as well, right? And we do have a message, uh, from, uh, Luke. Saying something's not right with his, um, web- Webex Cisco account and he'll lock in and log back out, so he'll be right back. Okay, and I know he usually gives the same spiel that that we have. All right, so seeing that there's no more questions on this item, um, I would like to move on to item number four. Presentation on the on the development of the West Heightsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan. We do have, um, a couple of members, um, here. That would like to present, uh, give me one second. Who, um?
Sarah Benson here from, uh, M N C P P C. It'll just be me this evening.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, so. We, I'm gonna leave the floor to you so that way you could tell us what the West, um, Heightsville Queen Chapel Sector Plan is. And what are the plans that are are coming? So welcome to our, to our virtual chambers.
Thank you. Do you mind if I share my screen?
You're gonna have to speak a little louder.
Okay, hold on. Uh, Melissa, can you give her access to share the screen, please?
That's suggested.
Thank you. Can can you hear me okay now?
It it's still a little bit low. Uh, Sarah, can you speak up just a bit or get closer to the mic?
Is this better?
A little bit better, yes. We'll work on it, okay?
All right, let me see if I can share my screen. Sorry, I'm I'm not used to the weather. Excuse me one second. Are you seeing my screen yet?
No, we're not seeing your screen yet. There you go. We could see your screen.
All right, great. Okay, um, I wanted to thank the mayor for inviting me this evening to speak, uh, on the West Heightsville, uh, Queens Chapel Sector Plan. My name is Sarah Benson. I'm a planner coordinator. With the Community Planning Division and I'm also the project manager for this sector.
Sarah, can you speak louder?
Can you hear me okay now?
It's it's better. Jimmy, can you hear or?
Yeah, be better. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Jimmy.
So I wanted to begin by just sharing a map that shows, um, how the city of Mount Rainier, uh, overlaps with the sector plan boundary. Um, so on the left-hand side of this slide, you can see the sector plan boundary is in the dark purple line. Uh, and the zoomed-in map shows the city of Mount Rainier in the light green color. Um, so it's the areas, um, from the northwest branch down to, uh, the District of Columbia border. And I wanted to update you on what we've been doing for the past year. Uh, we've really been focusing on public participation and outreach, uh, during the pandemic with the restrictions that we've had. Um, we've heavily focused on bilingual outreach, um, providing all of our materials. And our events, um, available in Spanish and English. Um, we launched a bilingual social media campaign, um, and send out quarterly e-newsletters.
Sarah, can you do me, can you hold one second? Uh, can everybody else like mute their mic except for Sarah, please? I have like, um, quite a few mic open.
There's a lot of echo, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Um, we conducted, uh, seven targeted focus groups. Um, we did four last fall and then we just wrapped up another three this fall. Um, we've met with more than thirty-nine different, we've had more than thirty-nine different stakeholder interviews with more than thirty. Key state, um, regional, county and municipal agencies. N G Os, major developers and major property owners that are in this area. Local county. We also produced, um, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis. A draft existing conditions analysis, preliminary vision statement and goals. And we've conducted a scenario planning exercise. We've had four, uh, key virtual community events over this past year. Beginning with a community kickoff, uh, virtual meeting last fall in October. A year ago and in January, we did our existing conditions open house. And in March, we did a visioning workshop. Uh, and then in September, we did an online growth concept showcase. Um, we've really tried to use as many of the tools in our toolbox during this virtual engagement over the last year. Um, we've had virtual office hours available both via telephone and via video format. Um, we have a virtual town hall, um, online available twenty-four seven that I'll show you in a moment. Um, we used, uh, interactive community mapping tool that was really successful and I'll show you that in a moment as well. Um, we tested out mural board, which is an interaction, interactive workshop. Tool that we got a lot of positive feedback on. Uh, we've done a variety of surveys. Um, we did our first Facebook Live in September. And we produced a project video this summer, um, just to try to build and incre- increase awareness about this sector plan. Um, in the community. So here's our virtual town hall. Um, it's a sort of a virtual reality, three-dimensional type space, um, on a webpage. Um, we've been updating it regularly throughout the life of the project. Um, it's great for us because we can, you know, change the layout of the room and add new materials as we produce them. Um, this is where we did our, hosted our online growth, uh, concepts showcase. Um, and it allows people to interact with our materials, watch videos, PowerPoints, look at maps, things like that. Um, and it also gives people space to, um, spend time with the material instead of just in a limited. Uh, time for like a workshop or meeting. Um, we've also, uh, used this mapping tool. Our G I S team. At the planning department, uh, created this map, um, of the sector plan ar- area. Uh, we had two hundred and eighty-six comments over a period of, I think, about three weeks. Um, this allowed the community members to access this map and click on specific locations where they had, um. Either a positive feeling or a negative feeling, or there was something, a suggestion they wanted to make. Uh, in a specific location, like, for example, there's no sidewalk here by the bus stop and we really need a sidewalk. So this was a really helpful tool for us, the planning team, and I think, uh, the community really liked this. We also use mural. Um, this is an interactive workshop tool, so it allowed participants in our visioning workshop. To join us in the same virtual space on a canvas. Um, and we were trying to replicate what a, an in-person workshop would be. So, um, participants were able to put sticky notes on the different areas of the board. Take polls and surveys, visual preference surveys, et cetera. Um, so this was really fun. Um, and we also made space for, um, we had one in Spanish. Um, we had a breakout room in Spanish and we also had a a room available for participants who. Could not access the mural board and wanted to participate via telephone and things like that. Um, we also launched a survey for the, uh, the visioning survey, which replicated this experience if a person couldn't participate. At the time that we did this. Um, I do want to kind of, uh, broad strokes on what we've been hearing over the past year. Um, from the community. Um, we've heard a lot about, um, a desire for improved pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, improved safety. Connections, crossings and intersections. Um, a desire to have cars going less slower. Um, going slower on the roads to make a safer, uh, environment for pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, we've heard a lot about, um, a desire to keep the river clean and free of litter. Um, a desire for better connections between some of the neighborhoods with the trail and park system. Um, there's a recognition of the of the diversity of the people that live in this area and that that should be celebrated. Um, there just, there's a desire for more gathering spaces, whether that might be through a community center or a civic center. Or a new plaza or some sort of place where people can get together both informally. And maybe formally, like a space where an H O A could meet to have their, uh, you know, like a monthly meeting or something like that. Um, people recognize this area is very vibrant and hip, um, and they'd like to see that enhanced. Um, they'd like to see, um, continued diversity of housing options and. And 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 the preservation of the naturally occurring affordable housing that is here. Um. See what else. Um, there's a recognition of the diversity of of small businesses that are in this area. They'd like to see that maintained. Um, but there's, uh, and a desire for some facade modernization at the different retail areas. Um, and I think we have seen a little bit of that recently with the shops at Queens Chilum, um, getting some of that done. Um. I think that's kind of it in a nutshell. Um.
Thank you, Sarah. So I'm gonna open up the floor to council so that way if they have any questions. Oh, go ahead.
I do have a cou- a couple more slides, sorry. Uh, those were the feed, that was the feedback in a nutshell. Um. We also used a tool called Conveo. Um, so we were able to put some of our products, for example, um, we. Drafted up a vision statement for the sector plan, an initial vision statement based on what we heard at this visioning workshop. Um, and some goals for the different elements of the plan. And this tool allowed us to put that document out there and allow people to access that and click on it and and. Provide suggestions for different language or things that we needed, we hadn't thought about. So that was very helpful. Um, we also, um, used that virtual room. Online to carry out our growth concept showcase. So in September, we launched this online, um, and invited the public to review and provide feedback. On some various growth alternatives for the sector plan area. Um, and these were different alternatives that ref- we felt reflected the, um, vision. Um, that was the draft vision statement and a lot of the feedback we'd heard from the community. Um, we were concerned about making sure that everybody knew, or as many people as possible knew about this online showcase. Um, so we did go out into the community, um, in early September and hopefully some of you have maybe actually seen these posters. Um, but, um, with the pandemic, we thought maybe people had gotten, I for one, learned how to use a Q R code myself. Um, so we put these attractive posters around the community, um, in in stores and laundromats. Um, we put flyers of these same posters in flyer form. Handle form at the different, um, apartment complexes. And to be honest, in the last nine months that we've had this, um, website up, we got a fifty percent increase. Um, of new user, new visitors and page views just in the month of September alone, and that represents about seven hundred fifty people. Um, from the area at least accessing this, um, and seeing some of our materials. Um, so that was really successful. Um. To get people to the showcase. I'm sorry, my PowerPoint froze for a second. Um, so this online showcase was, um, a way for us to share the scenario planning exercise, which I do wanna provide one caveat. The scenario planning exercise focused on the center of the sector plan area only. Um, we were really using this as an internal planning tool to help us define the local transit center, which is. This area around the West Heightsville Metro Station is designated as a local transit center in Plan twenty thirty-five, the county's general plan. Um, so we were just focusing on that kind of quarter mile to half mile radius a lot around the metro station. Um, where we do see the most, um. The the properties that are gonna, are more ripe for development or redevelopment over the next twenty-five years. Um, so this scenario planning exercise is really a tool that allows us to, um, test some different ideas. For how we can accommodate new residential and non-residential growth, um, over the next twenty-five years around the metro station. Um, and I do wanna mention that. The sector plan will address, um, the entire sector plan area. We'll be making recommendations for the entire area. Um, but this scenario planning exercise itself was just a tool, um, that we kind of zoomed in and focused on that, um, central core area. Um. Excuse me. So we developed these different scenarios, um, that explore future options for land use and public space enhancements. Um, the different, these concepts are long-term. Um, and it just offered also a way to visualize these different alternatives for the public. Um, sometimes we have ideas in our head or we have a vision statement with words, but having a visual sometimes really helps us. Um, think about the implications of that. So it's a really good tool, both for our planning team, I think, and for the public. So, um, we got feedback on these from an online survey, um, and we also did some focus groups. Um, and had some stakeholder interviews to get additional feedback. And we are taking all of that right now and finalizing a hybrid concept that will really help us, um. Um, guide the development of recommendations for future land use zoning, public facilities like schools. Um, and really defining that local transit center boundary core and edge. Um. As I mentioned, we had a survey that was available online, uh, to provide feedback on those scenarios. Uh, and we used Conveo for that as well. And now, uh, we are in the process of, we're beginning to draft the sector plan itself. Um, and we are, um, making recommendations for policies and strategies. That touch on the eight different elements, um, from Plan twenty thirty-five. Um, so we'll be looking at land use, economic prosperity, transportation and mobility, natural environment, housing and neighborhoods. Um, community heritage, culture and design, healthy communities and public facilities. And this should be my last slide. Um, I just wanted to remind you of our, uh, our timeline. Um, so we initiated this. So we initiated this sector plan in the fall of 2020, and we had our kickoff meeting in October 2020. We had that existing conditions open house in January 2021, the visioning workshop in March. We spent the summer doing scenarios development and took that to the public on the online showcase in September. And now we are finalizing that hybrid scenario to help guide us as we draft the plan through this winter. And we expect to have, we expect to go to Planning Board for permission to print in June. And that is our deadline, June 2022, and we'll have preliminary plan for public release next summer. That would be followed by a joint public hearing in September 2022 with the expectation of plan adoption in early 2023. So with that, I am finished, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Sarah, for coming and that explanation to one our community, also council to know where we're at. And, you know, if any feedback needs to be given, I have visited the virtual room, so it's definitely a very key and a way to merge people into what it looks like without actually being there. So I'm gonna open the floor up to Jared, Jimmy and also Luke. Jared, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Sarah, for coming in. I really, I really appreciate you taking the time to walk us through this. I myself have gone through the work, the virtual, sorry, I can't remember the exact term. You have the three different virtual scenarios. So I, you know, I know it's really hard to get, it's hard to do, get public input, you know, in general, and it's, it was exacerbated significantly during the pandemic. So I really appreciate the steps NSCPBC took to, to get community input and to facilitate in a way that was useful. And I hope, you know, the in-person works for a lot of folks, the virtual format really, I think, worked for a lot of folks as well. So I hoping, coming out of COVID, you'll continue to utilize these, this approach as well. So I just want to say, I really, really, again, really appreciate the work on this. I'm an avid transit user, work in transportation myself. And I'm thrilled to, you know, see something that takes this incredible asset that we have, the West Hyattville Metro Station, that's within the catchment area, that our city and Hyattville and other dense areas have, are proximate to, but the immediate, the immediate's region itself around the metro station is actually not particularly optimized in terms of land use. So really excited to see something that helps put a better street grid in, makes the area more walkable. That's been a big weakness of our residents walking to that metro station, myself included, in terms of the street grid, the street safety. And then assets near, near the metro station that folks can use as well. So I really, again, just really appreciate the work you've done. Looking forward to seeing next steps, and thanks for coming down.
Thank you so much. And I do want to make the comment that I think moving forward, we are expecting that, you know, people talk about going back to a hybrid office environment. I believe we'll be going forward with a hybrid outreach approach in the future and continuing having both, you know, as soon as we can, in-person and virtual, because I think you, you get different people at both of those, you know, people have different needs or requirements or limitations. And so I think we're able to get more people if we do hybrid in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Jimmy?
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for the presentation. You mentioned something about, I thought I heard you something about new development or something on Chilum. I misunderstood that. You said something had happened on Chilum business or something, no?
No, oh, I was talking about how we'd heard from a lot of the, we'd heard a lot of comments in the community about wanting to see facade modernization in the different retail corridors and the different shopping centers. They kind of felt like the shopping areas were a little bit rundown. And I was mentioning that at the shops at Queens Chilum on Queens Chapel Road, they recently had, they did that facade modernization. I believe they received a grant to do that. So there is like an upgrade there, and I think we'll be seeing that at, I believe we might be seeing that at Hamilton Street as well soon.
That was a couple of years ago? Is that the one you're talking about?
At the shops at Queens Chilum?
Yes, yes, they have. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Hope we move along. It's like a, unpolished, when you went through it, unpolished diamond. I think, you know, with West Hyattville, the whole area is ready for development. And, you know, in some ways, it's an unforgotten, forgotten part of our city. And so, you know, any kind of way we can help would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Selena. Sorry, everyone, I was late. My computer was having issues. But I appreciate you coming by. Sarah, were you the one who presented to us a while back? Were you, okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, and then did we, did we have a follow-up conversation? Was that with you? Have we talked a little bit about the potential to sort of have this plan loop in with the, with the Mount Rainier's Bike Master Plan? And then some of the stormwater issues down there?
I think you spoke with my colleague Kendra by chance.
Okay, yeah, that makes, that sounds right.
Something happened that day and I had a conflict and I, and I apologize, I couldn't show up. But yes, so what, that's on our, we're looking at the Mount Rainier Bicycle Master Plan. And we also have, you may have even provided copies of those. And we also have a copy of the Mount Rainier Green Infrastructure Plan.
Right.
So that, and we have a section in the sector plan that will bring out those relevant recommendations from those plans and sort of reincorporate them into the sector plan itself.
Awesome, awesome. And then I, you may have covered this when I wasn't on there, but, you know, the big one is that crossing of Queens Chapel Road from the Northwest Branch Trail there. It's a, it's always been a dangerous crossing. We still get emails from folks trying to cross there. You know, crossing that with a stroller is a harrowing experience. You know, I know when I first moved here, I didn't stop as a car when there were pedestrians there. And so I, you know, I don't, I think it's just a, what are, are there plans for that crossing specifically? I think that's such a key component of any sector plan is getting the south side, everything south of Queens Chapel able to safely access the West Hyattville Metro. And I just, I don't, maybe you covered that already, but.
No, I didn't touch on that specifically. With our scenario planning exercise, all of our scenarios had an enhanced or improved or enlarged crossing, pedestrian crossing at where you're talking about, where the trail crosses Queens Chapel Road, like near the bridge there.
Yeah.
But we've also heard about, I mean, crossing Queens Chapel Road at Chilum and further down is also kind of a harrowing experience for some as well. I've watched people try to cross with a stroller myself, and I just like, they are brave. So the pedestrian and bicyclists and, you know, parent with child in a stroller, person in a wheelchair, those are all the things that we're really thinking about, I think, first and foremost. And like I said, that mapping tool that we had, we had two hundred and eighty-six comments. And I'd say seventy percent of those are about pedestrian and bicycle improvements that need to be made for a safer, just for a safer experience. So we're focusing on that and looking at how we can improve Queens Chapel Road to get that north-south connection, as you, as you mentioned.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Sarah. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, definitely thank you for coming. And can you go back on the slide when it shows the three different sector maps that are being proposed? And to, also, the question is, can community members still give feedback and where are the upcoming meetings as well? And there was one, one of the maps that also showed like growth and expansion when it comes to Queenstown. And wanted to know how it directly will affect our, our city.
So I think this is the slide that you're mentioning, and it should cycle through them. So the scenarios looked at a few different configurations. And so these are different place types, and they are sort of maxed out. They kind of show the potential. It's not what is gonna happen, but there are different potentials for what could happen within the new zoning ordinance and things like that. So I don't know if I can keep cycling it through. All right, it's on like an autoplay. And I'm sorry, can you repeat the question about, the second question you asked about?
So one, I wanted to make sure if there's were upcoming meetings, so that way the residents need to join if they have any feedback. You know, you were, you know, your team was here in a previous meeting, so I wanted to make sure we follow up. And the last one would be like, you know, to continue this conversation, to make sure that when it comes to our bike plan and our master plan, we're all working collaborative in order to like have a bigger impact in the area.
Yes, so the online growth concept showcase was open for, so these materials are still in the virtual room. They can still be viewed. And we do have a virtual comment box where people can, you know, send any comments or questions. The survey's closed. It was up for about a month, so that has closed. We are wrapping up the public outreach right now, because we do, I mean, kind of at some point, you have to take it all in and kind of have a stopping point so we can be drafting the plan. I would say if, you know, there is a process through which when we release the plan in June, people can submit formal testimony and comments about these things. I would say if, if the council had any comments that they'd like to provide for us, I would do that as soon as possible. Because we did, we are wrapping this up. We did some focus groups in this past month in October about the scenarios. So the public comment and outreach part is kind of wrapping up a little bit right now. But we are planning in June, when we, in June or July, when we release the draft plan, we are planning to have an open house where we can present the recommendations from the plan and some of these visualizations, and people can come and learn and get to know the plan a little bit better. And then for the joint public hearing in September, people can sign up to speak or submit written testimony for that.
Perfect. Yeah, I would say like, you know, we'll be in communication so that when you guys have the open house and also the, at least the finiation of the plan, we'll also be able to promote within our residence. I think that's sometimes because it says West Hyattville, Queen Chapel, it doesn't, sounds like it relates to us. And the only observation I always, you know, I always address with you guys, like, you guys have to add Mount Rainier to the three, to the list, so that way the residents here know that it, it impacts us as well very heavily, you know, because we're so close by, but also when it comes to the various areas that we share. Okay?
That's a good point.
Yeah, so I think that that will allow for more involvement in our, in our in Buddha residence. So council, is there any other question for Sarah? And I cannot see your.
I have one, just comment.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Just not for Sarah, but a good point. I just want everyone to know that there's a wonderful new kind of walking and bike path from Chilum Road to the nature center on the north side of the levee. I was able to walk along today, and it's actually in the, so people can actually go from Queens Chapel, from Queenstown Apartments along, on the south side of the pool, straight to the nature center, which makes it really easy for people to access the nature center from our apartments there. First time I'd been there, I just wanted to let everyone know if they haven't seen that already. It's pretty new. Run along that purple line at the bottom.
Right there. Thank you, Jimmy. All right, so do we have?
Selena, oh, sorry. Yeah, I had a quick question, Sarah. I know you mentioned you did a, made an effort to make a significant outreach, which I know is hard during COVID. And I know feedback on these things tends to be concentrated in a narrower number of kind of highly involved folks. Were you, were you able to get feedback from folks that are most directly in the project area or adjacent to it? More specifically, a lot of the lower income and renters and folks that are in the immediate orbit of the station and not just, you know, I mean, honestly, a lot, this is with everything. We get a lot of more upper income homeowners, you know, weighing in. And it's, it's hard to, it is harder to reach some of the, some of the other folks.
Yeah, I think, I think in our experience, I would agree. I think it's often hard to reach renters sometimes because I'm not sure that they think that they have a stake in, in the kind of work that we're doing. But we have, for a lot of our outreach events, we've collected at least a little bit of information on who's been participating. At least for some of the events, we tried a no registration because we thought that would be reducing the barriers to participation. But for the ones where we did collect some sort of information, it did seem, you know, people indicated that they lived in the area, in the sector plan area, or they worked in the area, or they went to school, or something of the sort, so they had some sort of a connection, or they were right outside the boundary and they shopped here. We did collect zip codes at one point, and it seemed fairly evenly distributed across, across the sector plan area. And we, I know we have gotten people who live in, in some of the different apartment communities. So there has been some representation there. I don't have the specific numbers in front of me, but it's been tough with the virtual environment. And I know, you know, there's limitations to that, unfortunately.
Thanks for making the effort. Now, I appreciate your additional details. And thanks for, you know, making the effort and continue making the effort to engage those, those folks.
Our, our plan is for the open house next summer to be in-person, you know, crossing fingers.
All right, perfect. Since I got Luke and Jimmy, I mean, Jimmy and Jared. Luke, do you have anything else to add for the second round?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Luke. Do we have any member of the community who would like to make a comment, either on Facebook or virtually? Let me know by typing on the chat and I will call upon you. Okay, anybody on Facebook, guys?
Who's on Facebook?
Hello?
None on Facebook.
All right, thank you, Jared. Okay, and I don't see nothing on the chat. All right, Sarah, thank you so much, and we look forward to having you guys join a meeting in the future once, once the plan is also closer to the next round of finals, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, so Melissa, can you put the agenda up front? And we do have another presentation. And this one is, there you go, presentation on the draft climate change plan. We do have our wonderful resident, Mary Abe, who's also with the DOE here with us. And I would like to also mention that we do have the chair of the green team, Sarah, here. And also Joseph, who also I've been talking about this item. So Mary Abe, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you first of all for giving us the opportunity, mayor and council, to present the climate action plan. It's been under the works since, really in earnest of October of last year. So we've been on a very compressed schedule to put this climate action plan together. There's twenty-seven recommendations, or actually, I'm sorry, twenty-six recommendations that came out of this plan. And I'm briefly gonna go through some of the principles of the plan. The plan is publicly available on the DOE website. I previously forwarded the copy of the plan to the mayor, so hopefully you guys got a copy of the PDF. But we really are hoping that we can drum up a public comment on this plan. We've entered a thirty-day public commentary period, and we really need a public support and feedback on this actual report prior to it going to the county council on January fifteenth of 2022, which is really coming up very quickly. So without that, I will go ahead and share my screen.
Okay, perfect. I didn't ask you that. Go ahead, Melissa. Give Mary accessibility, please.
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Let me see if I'm, I'm not, I also am not that familiar with the WETEX. So hold on, let me see. Okay.
It's, it's been a challenge to all of us.
You see my, you see my, well, do you see my screen?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay. Let's see, try it again. Try it one more time. Now do you see it?
I...
Can you see my?
There you go.
There we go, okay. All right, all right, let me get going on this, so, let's see here. So the, the plan, it's, it's a fairly extensive narrative that we have, but I want to, there, there's a very important part, the first part of the, the plan, and it's basically a climate action plan, which is a call, call to action. And it's about making transformative changes in Prince George's County that start at a very basic and systemic level at county government, municipal government, all aspects of government that we need to transition to renewable energy. We need to lead by example, you know, climate leadership. Community health must be championed. Smart growth and clean transportation, which actually dovetails very nicely with the sector effort which Maryland National Capital is putting forth for the West Heightsville metro. Green business development, residential resilience, which I know is a very important thing for many Mount Rainier residents, justice and equity. And that's a very important point too, because with climate change and the coming impacts of climate, it's really our most vulnerable populations, which are most at risk to suffer the, the problems of climate change. And then the, the eighth tenant is really public engagement. So this first part of the climate action plan is really about a very straightforward commitment to changing how we do business and transforming to a renewable energy and adapting to what climate change brings next. So really in a nutshell, this plan is about a community-wide plan of how do we reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as a county. It's not just county government, it's everybody. And bar none, the biggest contributor to Prince George's County's contribution to emissions, to climate change and global warming is transportation. And then next up comes residential, commercial energy. And then in other are such things as fugitive gases, leaky pipes and things like that. But really, without doubt, transportation is really what the, the leading cause for climate, climate problems and climate change. So just as, in a nutshell, what this plan is proposing is that along with the, the government, the state government, MDE, we're calling for a 50% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030. And that is not, you know, getting to the goals of where we need to be, which is basically carbon neutral no later than 2050. And so just quickly moving forward, the climate hazards, which our county, we, we, there was a climate vulnerability study done as part of this plan, bar none, the top two climate hazards that our county will face are extreme precipitation and extreme heat. And basically in areas like Mount Rainier, this is particularly important because we have a high impervious area in our sub watershed. And so when we do get these extreme precipitation events, we're even more at risk of flooding, which is not reverian flooding, but actually caused by simply the surrounding impervious surfaces, parking lots, roofs, sidewalks, you name it. Anything that's not a natural area is actually, it's generating runoff. And so when we get those extreme precipitation events, the water is just, it's, it's going to pile up and doesn't have a place to go. The other aspect that we all need to be mindful of is extreme heat. I think we've been very fortunate that our summers thus far have been fairly moderate. But with climate change, extreme heat is really going to come to the forefront. You're going to have swings in weather where we have high humidity and high heat. And that's when our most vulnerable populations, people without AC, elderly, people on low to moderate income, maybe don't have the ability to have any kind of AC. Those are the folks that are really going to be suffering through this extreme heat. So the principles, what the climate action plan was, just for a little bit of background, it was put together as required by a county resolution, CRO 7 2020. And it basically were 16 members of various types of entities and representations in Prince George's County. There were three nonprofit environmental groups. There was representation from the utility companies, representation from the school system, representation for the municipal league, various agencies. All of these various work groups came together to come up with these recommendations. And basically it was guiding principles that you see here, feasible, bold, evidence-based, equitable, transparent and comprehensive was what guided their decisions when they started making the recommendations. And a very important tenet of the climate action plan is ensuring a just and equitable climate future. Really, the urgency to act and make a difference is now. There is no time, we've run out of time. And this isn't about my future, this is about your children's future and the future of our future residents. And so what we do today will have tremendous impact on their tomorrows. And so I, I really can't emphasize this enough. This is not something that we can plan for 10, 20 years from now. This is about taking action right now. So that's a, that's another tenet of the, the climate action plan. So getting down to what the key is for the climate action plan, taking action. There are three action areas in the climate action plan of the 27 recommendations. And action area one is bringing about transformational change. And that's basically saying, the way our system currently works right now, it has to change. Prince George's County has great policy, wonderful land use policy, the problem is we don't follow it. And that's what transformational change is about. At the heart of this climate action plan, and the commissioners wanted to make this very clear, that's another thing, this is not a DOE plan, this is a climate action commission plan. DOE was the county staff for this commission, which was requested by the county council. But of all the things that the commissioners really, really wanted to make clear in this plan is that our land use patterns have to change. And that is about doing infill development. And that is about really growing around our activity centers instead of urban sprawl where we're going out and we're cutting down forests or we're, we're putting under our, our precious agricultural land for houses. And it is really trying to, to make a difference in our urban areas. But on the same light too, there's kind of a dichotomy there because our urban areas also have very little tree canopy when compared to the rest of the county. So we have to change our patterns thinking that when we do development, that means we've got to go to the areas that are not developed. We really, really have to start looking at infill development, existing impervious surfaces and retrofitting them with development rather than cutting down a forest in our more urban areas, which really need that. Another action area is mitigation, which is getting to the heart of the cause of climate change. We must reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And again, that's why at the heart of this climate action plan, land use is a big, big tenet. Because if we can start to do our development in central areas such as in the Mount Rainier, Bladensburg, Kalmer, all the different inner core areas that are around our mass transit, people can live and work and walk to work and we can cut down on how much greenhouse gas emissions we, we are really spewing out as a community. But when we have large bedroom communities way out into the country and they're not telecommuting, there's a huge greenhouse gas emission. So that's a major part of the plan as well. And the third action area is really adapting to coming, coming climate impacts. And that is about the here and now. That's really about changing how we do business, our code, really starting to try to anticipate the new storms because the unfortunate reality is our current code is really designed for a weather and climate that has been very stable for the last hundred years. I mean, it really has. And as you can see what's going on in California, other parts of our country and, and Prince George's County, I mean, we had that heavy rain back, I believe it was in October or it was September of 2020, where we were, four to five inches of rain were dumped in a matter of two hours. And, and that is what climate change is going to bring. That's not going to be the exception, that's what's going to start happening and you don't know when it's going to happen. So we need to redevelop how we are doing business, where we're doing business, when we develop the land and what types of zoning and code changes do we need to make to protect our citizens and our businesses. So just very quickly, where this comes, where the, where the, the rubber meets the road, so to speak, are in these recommendations. And when you look through the climate action plan, really the meat of the plan is in, is what's called section eight. And what you're looking at right now is a, a very abbreviated table of one of the, the VATs of the recommendations. And this is operational and one of them I have highlighted, it says strengthen land use regulations. And what happens when you go into section eight of the climate action plan, that gives you a step-by-step implementation to-do list of how would you strengthen land use regulations? And then we get into mitigation, increase investment in activity centers. Another one is enact and enforce no net loss tree conservation regulation and policy to maintain and expand street tree canopy and forest as a land cover. So there's all these different recommendations and you get into adaptation. We have another 10 recommendations and I'm highlighting require community-wide climate resilient green infrastructure. So these are all really nice, bold statements and recommendations. So you say, so what does that mean? So I'm going to stop sharing my screen and go to another screen. And I'm going to bring you up an example of what these recommendations look like in the plan so you understand where the meat of the plan is. Do you all see a change in screen or do I need to go back and reshare?
We have the public comment and questions screen up, up right now.
Okay, let me, let me see how I can do this. I'm going to stop sharing and then reshare again. Having problems with this. Do you still see the same?
Right now we're seeing the screen with the faces, with everybody on. Okay, Mary, your skin, your screen has gone dark. Okay. Um, in the meantime? Okay, we'll go back to Mary once she, there you go, Mary, are you there?
Do you guys, sorry about that, I got booted off. I don't know if I, I hit something. I'm going to try to share my screen again.
Okay.
Do y'all see the screen? Do you hear me fine?
There you go, we could hear you and the screen looks like it's coming up right now. It's up.
Do y'all hear me fine now?
We could hear you and...
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you in the priority recommendation M7 is on the screen right now.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, we could hear you. Can you hear us? I don't think you could hear us, Mary. Uh, council, can you guys hear Mary?
I cannot.
When she was actually...
Wait, I can.
Yeah, Mary, we cannot hear you.
Hello?
We could hear you, Mary, but I don't think you could hear us. Let me see, let's see if we type in. Okay, I think she might have gotten, she's, she's there, but I don't think she could hear us.
Do you hear me now? Do you hear me now?
Yes, Mary, I can hear you.
Because I couldn't hear you guys, sorry about that. Are you good with me sharing my screen again?
Yeah, you have a screen up on, up right now.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
It's okay. So you have priority recommendations M7 on the screen right now.
Yes, and so basically what this is, is when you're looking through the climate action plan and you're really trying to figure out what those recommendations, that statement, that big, bold statement, increase investment in activity centers, this is the area you really want to go to in the climate action plan. Because what this is going to do is this is going to really take you through the different steps. Let's see, let's go up to the top here. I'll go to priority recommendation one, strengthen land use. It basically talks about what it is that you're going to do. And then it goes into who's involved, the implementation team, who at the county, who throughout the county. And then we go into implementation steps and it's like step one, step two, step three. Then when you get a little bit further down, once you go through the steps, we have what's called equity considerations and that's part of every single recommendation. And what we tried to think about was if we were going to implement any of these recommendations, how could we make sure that they were equitably implemented? And that's very important. Another aspect that's really important about these blueprints is measurement and tracking, transparency, government transparency. How will the government, how will the citizens and residents know? How will they know that we're actually doing what we're doing? How will we coordinate? How will we work with the municipalities? How will we work with businesses? And so it's in this section that always in each one of these recommendations, we have measurement and tracking. Then you get down, we have capacity and funding needs where basically it needs to be very clear that anything that we're talking about in this climate action plan, it can't happen with the existing funding and capacity that we have, we must build out. This is going to be a major effort to, 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 to implement this plan. And then under each one, then we have what's called helpful resources. We have direct links that are related to the recommendation. I realize I'm running a little bit short on my time, but I just wanted to just quickly show you what some of these recommendations look like in the plan so that when you're looking through the, the plan, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. See here. When you're looking through the plan, you know where to, where to look. So let's see here. So I guess with that, I'd like to open up to any questions or?
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mary. I'm going to open up... Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mary. I'm going to open up to Council. Like I mentioned, we do have our chair for the Green Team here, Sarah. And we also have um, I would like to say the chair for uh the Climate Parents, uh Joseph Jakuda as well. Who um I know with Joseph, uh when I first reached out and said, are you guys working on this? And who who has their hands on it, because I need to be there. Like he was like, Mary is, I was like, oh my God, let's you know. Let's reach out, right? And that way, because we want to make sure we either um have a comment or letter support. So we're going to be working on that to get it approved as soon as possible to make sure we have a say as a council. So I'm going to open up to the um council members and then I'll I'll open the floor also to Joseph and Sarah as well. Okay, uh so uh Luke, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mary. Just wonderful presentation. Thank you for all the work that went into it. Um underscores the importance of uh the ARPA funding that we're trying to figure out how to spend and the the stormwater management. Um potential retrofits that we we are able to do with that money. And I know that's a consensus interest of the mayor and council here. Um I I have one question. Um all of this is great and wonderful. Is there going to be any tool for? Um sort of enforcement to kind of hold the county's feet to their fire and in like, is there any? Is there any tool there? Is there is there going to be like a um? Is it is it going to be written such a way that you can litigate if the county fails to live up to that? Or or what sort of sticks do we have to to make sure the county follows through on that? And I know it's a loaded question, so I just curious.
Well, and it and it's a fair question. I'm I I think it's important to note that this is in fact a a a draft Climate Action Plan. Uh the County Council by unanimous resolution, to be clear. Uh put this commission together so that this Climate Action Plan uh could be created. And so it is going to be actually given to the County Council January fifteenth of this year. And really, it's going to be up to the County Council uh to decide what to do with it. And that's why public comment is critical. And that is so important, why the municipalities and all people within Prince George's County, if you have an interest in climate action. Uh it's important that you provide a letter of support, even if you just go online and do a survey and say, hey, I support the plan. That's how the accountability is going to be there. We need to get them to adopt the plan. And that's really, it's 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 going to be up to them. So in the in the County Executive. But again, again, I believe that it it is definitely um. They 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 were the ones, you know, they they supported this commission and this report. And um they actually, we 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 did it in a very, very compressed timeframe. We did have to get an extension to allow for thirty day public commentary period, which we're in the middle of right now. Uh we actually have a public meeting. We had one uh last night at the uh town of uh College Park. And we have another one uh for tomorrow night, in-person meetings at Surratt's High School down in Central County. And we have a final public in-person meeting um at Biltsville, um I believe Senior Citizen uh Center. Then we also have two virtual meetings, one coming up next Tuesday and then one coming up on November thirtieth. And we're doing whatever we can to reach out uh to any governing bodies who want us to present, to talk about the plan. But the plan's a big plan. I mean, it's like two hundred fifty, two hundred eighty pages. It's not a light read. So that's why I would emphasize that when you're looking at it, go to that Section Eight, which is really the heart of uh what we're recommending. And there's a lot of, there's plenty of changes in there that I think that you could get excited about with stormwater management.
Great, excellent. All right, if you're wanting to public, send some comment to the County Council. Thank you, Mary.
So I am so sorry, we're we're way over time. Can I ask for ten more minutes to give us enough time for the council members? And um our Green Team Chair and the Per Climate Change to make a comment. So I move to add ten more minutes to this uh item agenda, agenda item.
Second.
Thank you. See, well, seeing I got three or four, um if there's any objections, we have added ten more minutes. Uh Jared, the floor is yours, followed by Jimmy. Look, you did finish, right?
Yep, I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Jared.
Uh thank you, Mary, and for, you know, for your work on this and for everyone's inputs into this. It's an important um governing document. And so I just want to thank you. Um I I've I've read a lot of it. I have not read the entire thing, because as you mentioned, it is pretty lengthy. So I'm still waiting my answer through it. So uh, you know, the one, the one, I guess. I wanted to thank you for your comments about encouraging folks to make public comment. I do. Um I did, you know, there are lots of sort of feels like a lot of broad principles and a little bit squishy on action. So I I um, you know, going back to Luke's point, I, that certainly would be my my feedback. And I think in terms of folks from the public giving input, uh that we want to make sure to emphasize. You know, if there's specific goals that are identified or pathways that we get, you know, specific. Yeah, that we that we get some specificity or that we use this as a tool to make sure we. I'll say bind the county, but you know, make sure that we hold the county um. Oh accountable for the the goals that it's set. Um and not not just let them be aspirational, um abstract, so. I'm sorry, go on.
No, I was just going to say, if you if you get to Section uh Eight, which is really where we outline the blueprints. You get past the squishy fun side, as we like to say. That's where you'll find that 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 they're very actionable. And it talks about code changes. It talks about what we need to do differently to be climate resilient, to make our mitigation goals. Uh to to do what we need to do to be transformational. So those are that, that's the portion, if you if you have no time uh to read the narrative part, because it is a long part. Head right to those blueprints in Section Eight to get to the heart of what we want to do that has um very, a lot of specificity.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Jared, do you have any more comments?
Uh not at this time.
All right, perfect. Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Mary, thank you for all the work and I'll yield my time to move this thing along too.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. So um, can you do me a favor, Melissa? Can you put the letter on the screen and I'm going to open up the floor uh to um uh Joseph Jakuda? Because um there was a letter, as a draft letter, uh that we could start working on, so that we could approve on the December seventh. Um you have it in front of you. Uh Joseph, the floor is yours.
Uh thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh my 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 children ran me out of my office. But um first, I'd like to quickly say on that Queens Chapel Sector Plan, I hope I'm living in a community like that when I'm in my fifties and sixties. Be safer, walkable and show that we are taking climate change seriously and bonus points if that's annexed. Um but I'm here to talk about the Climate Action Plan tonight. I've been following the development of the Climate Action Plan for months now, first through a Sierra Club work group convened by Dr. Janet Gingold, a Sierra Club member on the commission. And later as a member of the Prince George's Residential Advisory Group that was put together by the commission. It is a well-thought-out plan, is implementable and actionable. It's not trying to bite off too much, but showing what we can do in the next three to five years in Prince George's County. Set up well for officials to follow, uh especially those blueprints in Section Eight that uh Mary had mentioned. And to uh also for the public to keep an eye on. The most impressive part, though, has been the process to allow residents to participate. It was clear that they were in taking engagement seriously. When we provided good feedback on the blueprints in Section Eight, we were listened to. No thing can be successful for cynical about being listened to and the commission and the staff are not allowing that to happen. Um I've already filled out the public survey. I hope everyone in Mount Rainier does. It didn't take very long. It took about five minutes to fill it out. I would also encourage the council to submit uh uh this letter of support for adoption of the plan. It it'll make Prince George's County um deal uh deal properly with climate change.
Thank you, uh Joseph. Uh Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um this is Sarah Lifcy, Chair of the Green Team. I just wanted to speak. You know, in support of people going and checking out this plan, making public comments on it. And also in support of the letter of of support from the City of Mount Rainier. This is very much in line with the goals and the objectives that we've laid out in some of our recent uh greenhouse gas mitigation um pledges. And I think it is uh, I think it is in line with our community's values and goals. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Sarah. Um Council, you have the letter in front of you. We cannot vote at this section, but I wanted for you guys to go ahead and take a look at it. Um and give any feedback that you have, so that will be voted on the December seventh. Um Joseph, Sarah, or Mary, whichever of you guys is, if you guys could provide us uh the link where people could make a comment. Our communication team could put that out tomorrow through all of our outlets. So that way, um we help support the cause of like getting um more feedback and a stronger stand in behalf of our city.
Um Mayor, I just want to make this offer that, you know, I live in Mount Rainier. This is dear to my heart. Uh is is you need me to come down, meet with people at Jose Porium, wherever it is. They need time to talk about the plan, wherever it is. I'm willing to 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 go out and talk to folks, whatever they need. So it is very important we get the support.
Thank you, Mary. I really appreciate it. Um uh let's keep in contact, because I know that time is um. Time is of an essence of how much time we could like turn in that report. I was um originally like, you know, I was, I was. We were all reached, like the various municipalities saying like, hey, time is short, but we know you guys are bodies and you guys have to go to a process. And you guys, if you guys submit a letter, we'll take it in. That's what it was important in. I want to say thank you to the three of you guys for making um this meeting in very short notice. And um informing us was important, because um we're very, very lucky to have very gifted people in the community. That could help us do this and working in this field. So I'll send this letter to you as well to see if there's something you see that it should be added as well. So that was a little bit stronger if needs be. Uh same thing uh for you, Sarah and Joseph. And then that will be presented to um to council. Um and then, you know, oh head um. Overdirected to the County Council, copy whoever you guys feel like it needs to be copied on this letter, so they know our stand. But by the council you hear, we have, we're very strongly supporting it. And although we cannot vote, we could strongly uh share our support and move it out to the next uh phase, which is the vote. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Council, anything else to add? Thank you, Council. Anybody on the chat or on Facebook that would like to make a comment? And thank you, uh Joseph, uh for putting uh the link, mypgc.us slash climate action plan. To go ahead and make a comment. And we'll go ahead and share it through our outlets as well tomorrow, so that the community knows where to go and uh make their comment in the plan um for support.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you again.
Okay, have a good night. All right, so um thank you, um everybody, for that was a great presentation, all right? And it definitely represents what we have been working very hard in Mount Rainier for many years. So moving on to item number six. Presentation on the Proposed Budget Calendar for the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three Budget. Uh fifty minutes allocated. The mayor and council will discuss the proposed budget calendar for FY twenty-three budget. Uh to reminder for Council, according to our chart, this has to be discussed in November, so therefore we have to approve it in December. This is not the budget itself, it's just the calendar um to make sure we make it public. It is based on on a resolution. Um and um you'll have it in front of you. Um it will be voted on December seventh. So if there's, you see some of the days that um or some, any questions on it, please, can you move it up? Um, thank you, Melissa. Um on it, in the past, we have either adopted the second. I believe it's the second of the four Tuesday of the month to discuss just budget. That means that the meeting is like two hours on its own and not two hours added to our regular meetings. So that's something that you guys need to um take into consideration. All right, so I'm going to open up the floor. Um I'll go ahead and go with Luke. Luke, you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um I'll I'll defer, um I'll come back to me for a minute. I'm I'm looking at the calendar and looking at this, just to check a couple of things.
Okay, so one thing we need to decide is about it, just so we could like, you know, frame the conversation. It's uh whether we want some of this meeting. So if you notice, that is a Saturday, that's for the public hearing. That's something that we adopted, because not everybody could attend the late night meetings. It gives an opportunity for us to like have the public hearing and the work session following and allow the committee to like work through it. When it comes to some of the meetings, um uh uh Melissa or Mr. Kamali. Um are these days based on our work sessions? Cause then we have to decide whether we want to have them as, so it'll be this meeting plus two hours or an hour um extra work session. Uh just for, you know, as part of the budget, or do you want to have a meeting? Two hours alone with just the budget, because if not, this meeting is with the budget, could easily run into one thirty in the morning. And because it's a lot to go through. So you don't have to make a full decision tonight, but you guys could uh could submit um, what is it that you'd want to do? Jimmy, Jared?
I put things down on my schedule and I'm ready to go.
All right, so do you want to have it the same day as the work as the work session or a different day?
Right now, it's fine, you know. I mean, let's, I mean, I'm reserving April second and let's see how far the public hearing goes if we have time for the work session.
So the way this works, the start, the days start being published and you have to stick to them. Unless it's an emergency or not, and so the public hearing will go on, followed by a work session. Um you cannot, you could um revisit it and come back to it, but you can, you have to have it that day, because this has to be published.
I'm I'm fine with it, Mayor.
Same thing for uh, just to make it clear, um they uh, the other reason why is the days have to, you know. If the public hearing sticks on that day is because the yield is based on the public hearing and that has to go to a newspaper. Um ad, letting people know that that's when it's going to be discussed. That's the reason why uh the public hearing stays on the day that um we decide to do it. It cannot be changed unless it's an emergency. But then you have to follow the procedures that go along with it, um to make sure you're informing people that that change will take place. Jared?
Um I have no, I mean, I I have no concerns about the schedule, unless many of my colleagues do, so I defer to their opinions.
All right, Luke?
I'm good. April second is open for me and and I and I'm good with all the dates. Um if we need to add, I would just ask that e- everybody sort of um. Uh could you scroll back up to the to the to page one, please? Whoever has control. Thank you. That's good. Um you see here the timeline. So you know, that December work session, that January work session, if there are items that you may want built in. And this is more for Mayor, I know you know this already, but more for Jimmy and Jared. If there are items you want, you know, Mr. Kamali to see built into the budget. Um it'd be helpful to have those discussions with him um before then. Or bring them up at the December work session or the January work session, probably the February work session works too. Just so that um, you know, all of us in the public can hear um um what what might be added into the budget. And sort of build in that time. Um I know a lot of us had talked, have talked about speed bumps and streets and sidewalks. So those sort of discussions might be useful to have at that December work session or January work session. Um and that that way, all these other work sessions that we're going to be very budget-heavy. You know, maybe we don't load them up with with other sort of stuff, but that's just um, you know, my take on on how to ma- maybe manage the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Luke. I will say, look at the calendar and you guys have um at least one more week to think about it. But um what I want to make sure you guys are fully aware, that if we continue having like three and a half hour meeting longs. And you add the budget, um me and Luke have been at meetings until one thirty in the morning, when the budget has been um, has been part of a work session. And I definitely don't want to go there, because at a certain point, it's like our brain is no longer functioning the way it should. So just be mindful um of that and um especially when you're thinking budget. And you have a bunch of other things before the agenda, by the time you get to budget, it's like your brain is not thinking budget. It's just like picking up all the information that's in front of you. So I will leave it like that for right now. If you guys um, if you guys think of what you guys want to do from then, you guys have the next week to figure out. So that when when it's like, uh when it's reintroduced on December seventh meeting for vote. We could like uh solidify the dates. Uh the other thing is like, um staff is going to be reaching out um. To the taxation um individuals to make sure we have the correct days. Uh when it comes to when do we need to put the the yield information out before the hearing? To make sure we do not commit um the same um errors as last uh season, where we had to re-vote on the budget again. Because there was a deadline that wasn't um, that wasn't met. Okay? All right, so if there's no other points of discussion on this, um anything like submitted or we could discuss it later. But um I would like to move on from this item, if you guys have nothing else to add. Council, are you okay with moving to the next item?
Yes.
Okay. Luke, Jimmy?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right. Perfect. And I see you shaking your head, Luke. So I'll take that as a yes. All right. So moving on to item number seven, ARPA discussion. Uh, the mayor and council review updates on the list of potential projects, identify next steps and schedule, uh, for community involvement. And we have about twenty minutes allocated, uh, to this. Um, can you put on the screen, um, the document, Melissa, please?
And Mayor, I know you had a recommendation to add a, uh, a, um, a column for community input for each item, and I added that if you want me to share my screen.
Um, yeah, please, Luke, go ahead.
I will. I can share my screen, Melissa. Okay.
Melissa's like, yes. You're happy. I see, I saw a smiling face, Melissa. You're like, yes. All right. Perfect. Uh, thank you, Luke. Um, so why don't we do this? Uh, Luke, if you want, go, can you help us, um, can you go through each item? Um, okay?
Yep. And I promised the mayor to keep this, um, as quick as possible. I just, I just wanted to get some quick updates. If anybody had any updates on anything, um, I don't think we need to make decisions or have big discussions on these items. Um, but just so that we, we continue to, to know where things are. Um, the, so we'll start with the stormwater projects here, um, the Perry Street ones, the, um, the thirty-third in Perry and the thirty-first in Perry. You can see for every item, I added a column for community outreach. Um, on this one, Selena and myself met with the Stormwater Management Consultants. A few residents came by. Um, so EcoSite and LID are, are on those two projects that we had, uh, consensus on last time. Um, working up those things. Um, the Arundo Road extension, there is no, um, I have here tool design recommendation is like the community input piece, because I know they had some recommendations for this road. Um, but there has been no, um, discussion with the county yet. So that's still something that probably needs to happen for this one, but nothing to do right now. Um, Thirty Second Street, um, between Shepherd and Taylor. Um, the communication there with residents, we've had email discussions with them going back two years with, like going back to Mayor Miles and myself on some problems there, um, public work. So at the time when Mr. Kamali was the director there, but nothing recent. Um, the thirty-first street, Green Street. Um, we need LID and EcoSite to provide us feedback on the breadth of this project that they identified. Um, but that just hasn't happened yet. I can take that on myself to send that email out.
Can I enter the first second, Luke?
Yep.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
So we, we had nailed down like a summer. We're going to focus on the whole list or we're going to focus on the ones where we had kind of had consensus. I don't mind if we do this, but I mean, it's a lot of this stuff that's like future, you know?
So some of it, Jimmy's because we want to make sure we let the community know what input the community, we have had with it. And also where are we with the, with a couple of them? So he's going to read through at least like, you know, the community consult, uh, the community outreach portion of some of this. And then it's like the next step. So we'll work, uh, or update of the work that has been done. So go, go ahead, Luke.
Yep. Um, the redesign of thirty-fifth, thirty-sixth and thirty-seventh on the south side. We, we need another community meeting over there. I, we were, Jimmy, you were there. I should have put your name here at the thirty-seventh street park. There were only a couple of residents who provided some opinions there. Um, so more, more works needs to get done there. Um, Newton Street, we do have another, uh, th- this is, um, Newton Street from thirty-fourth to thirty-seventh. Selena and I met with the Stormwater Consultants there. Two residents also showed up um, for potential issues there. And I think we actually did get a cost estimate. So I will update this line item with the cost estimate that the Stormwater Management Consultants provided us here. I think it was eighty thousand dollars. So we do now have a, uh, cost estimate for this project, um, but there may be, may, may need to get some more details. Um, the last, or the two here from recommendations from the tree commission. Um, they're going to present those at the December work session. So we'll get more information there. Um, they're slated to present. Um, the Mount Rainier Elementary Stormwater Project, we still have to reach out to the county to see, um, um, what, what plans the county has for their capital improvement projects for our schools. Um, Joe's Movement Emporium, their stormwater project, we don't have any update there. Um, the Thomas Stone, the expanding the outdoor classroom, um, that was a consensus and then.
I did, Luke, hold on. So I did spoke, uh, so I inform, uh, the PTOs and the principals as well as the board member, uh, Pamela Busisruder, that they were awarded the money and more steps were to follow. So they are aware of that. Um, so, um, I did a conversation with, uh, Pam and she was able to provide me the schools, um, the information for the schools' report cards and stuff as that. So now have another follow-up conversation, um, with her, but we're moving, um, we're moving forward, at least gathering the information and, and things that potentially could be needed. Okay?
Okay. Okay. Put that in. Um, so that's for Thomas Stone and, um, Mount Rainier Elementary. Right? Um, and then we get to Joe's Movement Emporium. Um, uh, I don't know if we have, do we have any updates here for the literacy through the arts education and then Arte para todos?
Well, I, I thought we had agreed on the arte para todos, the, it's a last lives live session. So I think it's a question of to the city manager, what they actually need from, uh, Joe's Movement to actually implement that. That's why I was trying to focus on the ones where we kind of had an agreement on. So I think that's right now in the city managers, uh, to reach out to, uh, to broke to see what actually they need to get that together. That's my sense of it.
So, um, Arte para todos reached out to me. I saw an email. It was in, um, they reached out to me. So I need to read it. It's, um, it actually is in Spanish, but, um, so I glanced at it and I apologized. I, I was going to get back to them tomorrow and figure out what, what, what they needed from me, uh, or, or what exactly they were reaching for me because I spent, um, most of the day in meetings and then like on the basket. So I, I literally came, came to, uh, home to have this meeting. Um, so I, I think that with that one, we did meet with the consultant. Uh, because we do need to have a Mr. Kamali, the consultant, Luke and I, uh, because we do need to have the program manager in place in order for the process to be put together, the applications, requirements, what is it that we need? And including award letters. So at this point, uh, we need to make sure we're doing the administrative end. And that includes like hiring the program manager, um, followed by award letters and requirements and, um, and I think I covered everything, right, Mr. Kamali? Yes?
Yes, but, uh, Mayor, for your information, the job, can I respond to that question?
Go ahead. No, go ahead. It's your, the floor is yours.
Yeah, just, um, well, I appreciate that. So I want to let you know that, uh, we have the job description for the project manager ready. We're going to post it tomorrow. It's going to take some time to find somebody and it's going to be a process that we have to go through. But hopefully we, we are trying to get somebody on board as soon as possible. So my goal is to get somebody there as soon as possible, but somebody that is qualified to be able to handle uh, all these projects and be able to work with me and the consultant. So hopefully we're going to have somebody on board very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you.
All right. So Luke, I apologize. I jumped over. I forgot it was way in the bottom.
No, that's fine.
So I'll give you guys the feedback after, like I read the email of what specifically it says and, um, what, what questions they have, they had from me, um, in general. I don't think it's necessarily ARPA.
Okay. And so what, in, in just to, so what Selena was referring to earlier is that, that administrative process for grantees. So where, um, this, the consultant said that where, um, we're sort of awarding a third party that's, so it's not the city doing the, the activity. Um, there's going to have to be a process, a grantee process and a process for them reporting to us. And so this program manager is going to help us build that out. Um, but somebody like a Joe's Movement Emporium will have to then comply with whatever that process is. Um, but Jimmy, also to your point, that's what Mr. Kamali, the city manager is sort of working on right now is that, that administrative process for awarding the grant, grantees. So that's down at the program ma- manager. Um, so going back up, um, finishing with the schools, um, these two programs here, um, the early childhood vouchers for daycare or after school programming. That's still in sort of the, the design phase. I know Mayor is working on that. Um, the five-two-nine is sort of on hold. Um, the MRBA proposal, again, same sort of, um, thing, which is that we are, um, going to have to, um, uh, build that out and create an administrative process for, um, for that proposal for the businesses.
All right.
Okay. And then we need to build out the potential partnership with FSC. That's on my plate. There's no update there. Um, food security, um, we had slated the hundred thousand. Um, Mayor, is there, is that one where we are going to run that as a city or is that one where we're gonna?
It's a city. It's a city. So the Thanksgiving basket, the Thanksgiving baskets, the holiday baskets and any other food related stuff that we do, um, the city's running it. So right now we're having people pre-register so that we, we have documents that this is, um, Mount Rainier residents and, and so on, right? But it's like, so this one we run it like very similarly to like last year. Uh, so that's what we're doing. So it's a city-run one. And we all, we'll work with partners, but it's like the funding is going to be utilized, um, or expended by, the funds are being expended by the city and AIE like, you know, us. Us slash Kamali. Thank you.
Question is where we work with partners? Can the city do that? Do we need the same administrative issue there?
No, this is differently because.
I think some of that was, uh, sitting, some of that we were going to work with partners and the community.
No, I think it's a little bit different. Uh, Jimmy, what are you thinking of? Um, at least for food security, we do, I do have partners, like, you know, Capitaria Improvement Plan, the office of, uh, council member Danny Tabarez, right? But they provide various food that, uh, we might need incentives or stuff like that, right? But this is like a direct, a program that the city, that the city runs. Um, and then we could pair, we could partner up with like, let's say the schools to help them with some of like the, the, what's it called? Uh, with some families that, um, as you guys are, might be aware, um, as of maybe a month ago or so, the schools, like in general, the schools, all the schools, uh, public schools are not offering supper anymore for the kids uh, before they did, right? So this money is going to be geared for both of our holiday campaigns and we're going to try to put some space in it to figure out if we could collaborate with the schools to be able to provide them, um, some of the things that they need. But when it comes to the other two or, you know, three to, two, two to five other partners that I have, they usually provide the, the cost. But this also like in case we need to have, uh, an occasion where we have people that might be able to bring the food in my, in, in an area and we just need to provide the tools, that money is able to, um, allow us to do that. But this is a city-run event, uh, city-run, um, effort, which is definitely different than, um, than, than the other ones where we're granting money to somebody else.
Uh, Mayor, I may kind of don't quite agree with our discussion on that. I thought some of that was going to be with, uh, uh, I mean, I could be wrong, other kind of community, uh, church and other groups that do similar kind of food security that we might give them grants to do that also. Uh, that was my understanding. Uh, I mean, whatever is easiest to get to it out there is, is most important, but I thought that would be a combination of other groups in the community that might also be doing food security, uh, programs. Uh, that was my understanding in our discussion when we approved it.
No, uh, Jimmy, we will need at least a lot more. So this, um, and I'll tell you this, Kamali, Melissa could tell you, this is barely going to get us through the holidays, that amount of money right there.
Hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's very expensive. Food, this is the things we need to keep in mind. One, food right now is very expensive and there's a big shortage of food everywhere. And this is that we have call, we have pair up, we have worked with other partners that they have reduced the cost for us. But even then, um, food is ridiculously expensive right now and there's a shortage of food and, um, of various items. So yeah, so that money right there is going to get us through, um, through the holidays. Um, and we might have a little room to spare. That's originally I had mentioned, um, closer to, uh, three, even three hundred thousand um, for us to move through it. A hundred thousand is barely going to cover, um, what we need to do for the holiday season. And that's even with people willing to donate and we're having, um, a lot of volunteers helping us right now. So that way, um, the staff will focus heavily like on Friday, but like the rest of the days, we have had volunteers putting everything together to minimize the costs as, as much as we can in the, in, in the labor end as well.
I, I, I have a recommendation that we maybe, you know, this could be one that we come back for more funding and potentially to, to at least have a discussion about, you know, what Jimmy's talking about to see if there is a way to to, to help some of the third parties that are in the community doing food, just to, just to, because if we're going to have to talk about more funding, it probably makes sense to have those conversations at the same time.
Thank you, Luke.
And I, I just want to say, I think we need a little bit, you know, kind of more detailed about, that's a lot of money about, you know, I'm all for it, but you know, how mu- you know, with Thanksgiving, uh, how many does that, you know, how many baskets does that mean and what does it entail? Just so we have some kind of accounting for, for, because we have to report.
We have all that information, Jimmy. We have every single penny. Every single penny is, uh, is accounted for. We'll go ahead and make the report to, um, to everybody. Um, and this is the reason why we're reaching out. We're trying to get between seven hundred and a thousand baskets. We have nine thousand residents who have been heavily affected. And right now we're working with, uh, both schools, um, Rainier Manor. We're also working with Mounties Act slash Cert, uh, former Cert. Uh, we're also working with the former Food Pantry to try to get, uh, the various partners that have been helping the community, um, accessibility to make sure they're able to provide this food. So we are working with them. The only thing is like the city is buying the stuff in bulk, which has allowed us to, um, purchase things cheaper than rather like, you know, um, people going to buy to self a, a full price. So we are working with partners, but it's being led and run by the city, working in partnership with the various, um, with various stakeholders.
Okay. Um, and for these next, next, um, really four, um, items here, um, and let me just make them consistent, um, these, uh, the rental relief, the cash incentive, the home repairs, the workforce developments. Um, I know we have cons- consensus on rental relief. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll just need to develop a proposal. And that's the status of, of the other three here as well. Um, so for these items here, um, there is proposal development still needed and I, and I think we're still in that um, uh, stage. Is there any, any difference there? Anyone disagree?
No, I think for the rental, we did something similar last year and we'll just like work on the proposals, um, on it. It'll be like city-run, um, um, as well. Um, and the other ones look the same as well. So we're on the same page, Luke.
Okay. And then, um, I know there may have been some movement on the city-owned parks. That's a big reason why I wanted to have this discussion. Um, uh, for Richardson Park, um, uh, is there, do we have a cost estimate, um, for that one? I, I think there was some mentioning of that last time.
Yeah, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours. Mr. Kamali. Mr. Kamali actually has a quote, uh, for Richardson Park. Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Well, we do have a cost estimate for the equipment and the fencing around the park. So we're talking about something around hundred fifty thousand dollars and, uh, I can provide the information to the mayor and council at any time they want to see the cost estimate.
That would be great if you could forward that us.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And just to remind the community that Richardson Park is actually the only city park that we have, uh, as a city that actually has, uh, youth equipment on it. Um, and that's the reason why it's the urgency to make sure, um, it's fixed. Um, and that is accessible for our youth. Also, the location, um, is key because it serves a very big demographic, um, when it comes to the census, um, uh, numbers that is highly affected. Um, so just, that's the reason why it's been a big push to try to get the park going because it's, it's definitely does not represent us well when it comes to what Richardson Park in. And I'll tell you this, uh, Mr. Kamali, his team had done the best they can to, you know, put, uh, shoestrings together to make it happen, but, um, it needs help. Thank you, Mr. Kamali for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for further explanation.
Okay. Uh, go ahead, Luke.
Great. So that's Richardson Park. For Spring Park, has an RFP gone out for Spring Park? Great, so that's Richardson Park. For Spring Park, has an RFP gone out for Spring Park yet? And, and if not, what's the status of Spring Park?
The floor is yours, Mr. Kamali.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Spring Park, Jared, as the council member, Jared also knows that we're working with the Jack. Jack's supposed to give us the final drawing by this month, and uh, also we reach out to the county to find out if we could connect the well to the inlet that we have at the Shepherd and um thirty-third street. So there is a cost estimate for that connection, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. But we're still waiting for Jack, and Jack has not finalized his uh, his drawing. But the last time that Rosio, the acting director of Public Works, was in contact with him, he promised to give it to us by end of this month, but I'll definitely follow up with him again to make sure.
Right.
Uh, was that it, Mr. Kamali, you have something else to add?
No, 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 that's all. I think Jared was trying to ask me a question, probably.
Okay, Jared, anything to?
Oh, no, just a note on that, Mr. Kamali, um, are you? Um, do you think we'll get that by the end of November? I know it's been, um, there's been some back and forth, trying to get that from Jack.
Yeah, uh, definitely. That's our goal to get it sooner than that, but unfortunately, he's not been that cooperative. So uh, we've been pushing him and asking him when we haven't paid his final invoice, which is another, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars from the contract that he had with the former interim city manager. But unfortunately, uh, we haven't got anything from him yet, but I promise to get it as soon as possible.
Okay, if I can be of any help in reaching out with um, in coordination with you, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kamali, can I ask you a question, Luke, and this will be important to put there on the line? Until when do we have the funds available to spend for Spring Park? Um, that way we could put a deadline right there if potentially um, we need to spend X amount of money of, of that and and expand even more with the ARPA funds?
Well, the money that we have, the deadline is March twenty-two. That grant that we have from the county. And the city is supposed to have a forty thousand dollars matching fund. Last time that it was in FY twenty-one. But I don't see it in FY twenty-two budget, which is, which I was not involved in it. But the deadline for the Spring Park, according to the county document, is March thirty-first twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Go ahead, Luke.
And I would say that there is, um, if you look in the city budget, the line items for um, like grant revenue and capital improvement spending, I think, I, I don't think it was specified, but I think it was in, the, the, the capital expenditure included both the, the, the money that is, that, that we had set aside for Memorial Park and Spring Park. I think it's a combination line item, so the money should be there. Um, Selena, correct me if I'm wrong, but it should be in that line item, but I can check again.
Yeah, I'll work with you guys to look for it, cause I thought it was there, but I'll work with you guys with it.
I think it was a combo line item, so it may not specify, it may not be clear, but I know we had that discussion. And then um, I, you know, Jack had some issues with the prior city manager and getting payments, so I'm, I'm sure expediting payment to him will help make sure, I, I think um, you know, th- there was some frustration on his part, so a- any effort, any, any thing we can do to alleviate that, I think would, would help improve that, that, that relationship, which is a key relationship for the city there and the amount of work they've been able to do for us. I'll offer that recommendation. And so I just, the importance of getting that RFP out, so that um, you know, if we do have to request an extension, it could be a small one, or maybe, um, you know, be, it, it's an important project that needs to start in the spring. Um, I guess is the bottom line.
You wanna make a note on, on your?
Yes, yes.
That we don't lose track of it. Good conversation, Luke. Thank you for leading.
Yep. Okay. Um, Rogers Park, I know Jared, I think you have an update for us on Rogers Park.
Uh, uh, sorry, yeah, I've uh reached out to the um, folks that were in, were involved in pulling this together before I came on council. I know there'd been kind of a pause, and we're gonna uh, convene a meeting um, to keep that um, to um, get that conversation and the plans for that um, going again. So I will uh hopefully have more for you uh next meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Jared. Jared, you have all the parks except for Richardson. Next one on the agenda, Jared? No.
Um, and then um, Edgemont Park, I just, what I did here with Edgemont Park, um, is that um, thi- this may be incorporated into the thirty-first and Perry Stormwater Retrofits, cutting off that road, extending the park. So that's the update here for everybody. And then residents have proposed a small garden bed and park. Jimmy, that's at Perry, Perry and thirty-first. It's a tr- it's a triangle green space with a lot of trees. It has the stairs coming down Eastern Avenue, that's the southern edge of it, and then the, the northern edge is, is Perry Street.
It's the poles that they keep knocking over, and we keep getting pictures from the residents, Jimmy. Remember the pi- the pictures we got, I think this morning or Monday? That's uh Edgemont Park.
Well, i- it's the triangle between eastern.
Yeah, I got it.
Perry, okay.
Okay. Um, and then is there any update on the bike co-op window replacement?
Mr. Kamali?
Well, the only thing that I sent this information to our consultant and the, the latest information that I have, Tom was telling me that we are trying to find out if there was, if there was any lost revenue that, because it's a city building, and we have to have a lost, you know, revenue in order to be able to use ARPA money for bike co-op. But right now, he's working on it, and even I checked with him yesterday, he said that let me search more and get back to you. So right now, I'm waiting on the consultant to provide me more information. I'll definitely get back to you.
One question on this chart, which I can't figure out, is whether uh these have all been approved. I mean, not approved, but like recommended, cause some of the park stuff.
Yeah, only the ones that are in green, only the highlighted ones in green. So the ta- the table at the top of the chart, green is the only um, there was the only items that have consensus for moving forward.
Yeah, but the other question was, uh, which have been actually recommended? In other words, the ones which we are green are the ones we've agreed to. But there's another question of, uh, are there things on this list that the consultant says are not eligible?
No, there's nothing that is not eligible on this list. These are, these are only eli- all the, these are all the eligible projects that we have been recommended. There are no ineligible projects on this list.
So Luke, once you finish doing the, the whole read-through, I would like to um, propose um, or re- or ask, whatever, which of the words is, um, consensus on moving forward on three more items, uh, that I think are important. Okay?
Okay. Okay, we are, um, for the healthcare proposals, um, all of these need to be developed. I don't think we have any developed proposals for any of the healthcare proposals.
One, uh, actually two of them. Uh, one, the vaccine incentive. Um, right now, Brentwood nor Brentwood common manner, the, the whole entire zip code, cause three or four different cities in our Brentwood share the same zip code. Uh, they were basically doing, you know, what I was thinking of doing with that, which basically is like work with a partner. And then they're giving incentives. In the case of those three, three or four different cities, um, they're giving like twenty-five dollar cars when you get your second vaccine. They were, they work with um, with one of the vendors to be able to provide food for people like um, to be able to get a ticket once on it, so that's where the incentive works. So I'm also having conversations with um, county council member Danny Tavarez. And the schools, both Thomas Stone and Maranier Lumentry are also having uh vaccine clinics in December. So I'm gonna be reaching out to the principals to figure out if there's any way we could team up with them as a city to be able to provide at least an extra incentive, so that way um, we could draw more people to be vaccinated in those two locations. So that'll be a way for us to work with partners. Secure that is, because of my conversation with uh county council members, Danny Tavarez's team. Um, si- we still have uh very low vaccination rates um in the city. So that's the reason, so we're looking into potentially either having a, a forum or inviting like people to come to a meeting, or doing some videos with MRTV to like inform the community of like um, the misinformation regarding vaccines, and try to incentivize people to get the vaccine. But we're still like, I think we were number seven, number eight out of um, the top ten of um, low vaccination rates. So we're still having a lot of struggle, and that money could definitely be used for that. Like I said, the other four different cities are using it for it. And we didn't meet, we did not pair up with them on this, but we're definitely um, the proposal, and, and I briefly um, talked to Mr. Kamali about it, is to um, figure out if we could pair up to, with the schools, so that way we could incentivize, since they're gonna put the location, they have the vaccines, and that way we could work with them to potentially just do the incentives. Uh, but that's basically the wa- the vaccine incentive, um, what it looks like. The other thing, when it comes to the crisis management social worker, this is something I know, Luke, that me, you, um, and former council members have discussed. Currently, we have a part-time con- uh, social service coordinator, and we do need to make sure she is uh full-time. Uh, mainly because um, the need is heavily, especially when it comes to people like applying to like the county, even applying to our services, um, Medicare, social, everything. And the reality is that at this point, our part-time person cannot do it, and they need more time. So this could be a way for us to be able to provide what the city has and expand it, and Mr. Kamali does has um a number in mind, cause this is something I was thinking of uh potentially proposing for the budget before ARPA came around. But um, Mr. Kamali could give you figures of what the, what the total will potentially look like in order to make this position instead of just part to make it full-time. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh, based on the, uh, the rate that we're paying her at this point for hourly rate is twenty-seven point eighty-one dollars. So the total that we need uh for her to be a full-time is gonna be fifty-six thousand dollars per year, plus twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars benefits. So we're talking about seventy-six to eighty thousand. To have her as a full-time, and I appreciate Mayor, because she is really, uh, she needs to have more time in able to be, uh, to do the complete work that she is receiving every day, and I appreciate that.
I'm supportive of that. Can we put on the legislative agenda to approve it?
Yes.
I mean, we should make a list of what we actually have to vote on in December meeting. That would add that one.
That'll be um, under, I think it's the next, after the updates, ne- followed by the next steps, correct, Luke?
Yeah, I, we could um.
Thank you, Luke.
I'd have to go up and see what that is. Uh, those are sort of dates for decisions. Um, which I could have put right here. Um, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get, we'll, 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 we'll get a way to identify every item that needs to get on a budget amendment. Uh, I'll, I'll fix that afterwards. Um, okay, and then the other ones here on health, health outreach, workshops.
I will work on bringing more information forward, and, cause I'm also talking to other cities to see if they wanna team up with it, or with the county to see if they wanna team up with it. So we're, we're getting there, or the schools, um, you know, cause I think in the past, it's like the schools have teamed up, Joe has teamed up, we have teamed up with them. So there's various of us that um, could potentially be doing this um, uh, this work to maximize uh our, our funds.
Okay. And that's the same for the workshops, okay? And then for the city work, we talked about the program manager already, we have the ARPA consultant already. Um, reimbursing the city for COVID-nineteen loss and bonuses for frontline workers. Are, is there any updates on those fronts?
There isn't, but I think we definitely need to look into uh the frontline uh workers. So um, Mr. Kamali, the consultant, and, and I'll team up with them to um, to figure out what the plan is, because um, we do have quite a few of um, feel that, and I need to ask specifically how far it will extend, because I know um, at least Public Works PD and uh Colder out in the community constantly, um, daily. But also you have some members of our team that are also being highly involved with community events. So even if, my question for, for him, Mr. Kamali, will be um, you know, our communications clerk, and you know, um, and if, you know, when they, when they go out to, let's say, do special events for us, if they will be able to be, uh, get us some of those um, so, some that of additional funding to um, for the purpose, so that aside from their desk job, right? Uh, so that'll be the follow-up question, cause I know um, they are spending a lot of time in the community with me, um, with the various programs and um, events that we're having. Uh, so it's not just a desk job, so at least like if it covers like the hours, they're, they're out there in the community doing that specific portion. All right. Uh, Jimmy, Jared?
Go ahead.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so uh, Luke, I definitely would like for us to um, to propose for us to move forward when it comes to, for us to add it to the agenda. Our Richardson Park for the January, I mean, December seven agenda. So that'll be the proposal for mayor and council, so that way Mr. Kamali and Rosio could start moving forward um, with the park and um, and, cause it's gonna take a while to get like the plans, the information, the community involvement. Because the idea with Richardson Park is not just like put the items and walk away, it's actually get um, community engaged, especially our youth. Um, in the things that they would like to see, and um, and help make that happen. And yeah, there's a list. I, I saw that sign that says, receive complaints, pla- yeah, pla- plenty of wonderful complaints.
Listen, Richardson Park, can we can just confirm with Mr. Hamler that that's eligible? I may.
It is.
It is?
Yeah, Kamali, Mr. Kamali?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We already asked him, and he said that we're good to go. Equipment, everything can be upgraded, and uh, there shouldn't be any problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. Jimmy, um, anything else? Jared? Oh, Jared's not there. Sorry, Jared. You're just gonna like run back, um. Anything to add, Jared? I know, I called you right outside.
Sorry, I stepped, stepped away for a second. Uh, no.
Perfect. Um, Luke?
Yeah, I would be, I, I would be good with Richardson Park, but I also want Spring, I, 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 I think Spring Park's really important, because and I know we don't have a cost estimate there, but I do think that, um, once we do have a cost estimate, um, that, you know, I just, you know, we're not gonna be able to allocate or make a budget amendment for Spring Park until we get a, go out with the RFP and know what the cost is, but I do just wanna hold, I, I, I do think that, I, I, I would love to be able to gray this in green, because I think it's really important that we do Spring Park, because we have grant money for it. And I just, I just think we need to get it done, and, and I, I think you, it's, it's the same way I feel about Memorial Park. We have money for it, we should just, you know, get them done. So I, I feel that way. And, and so I, I'm good with Richardson Park, but I would also request that Spring Park gets a, gets a graying of green. But ob- obviously, it wouldn't be ready for a budget amendment, cause we don't know the cost.
So I would tell you, um, going back to the conversation, we have the consultant. Um, I know green space is very dear and near to all of us. And that was the reason why we wanted to make sure we put a line that said uh senior parks and property, because um, you know, we don't have that many. For being a green city and green environment, our pockets of uh parks are mainly owned by the county. And the very few that we have, we cherish them, and we wanna expand and make sure they're accessible and um, and deserve the purpose for the community, right? So I, I'm in support of like the parks. You, you definitely have my support for that. We will have to get some information. But we need to make sure that, let's do remember, we only have two point seven, um, two point seven only in the bank at this point. Uh, this doesn't mean that we, we need to know, what we could do is like, um, direct um, Mr. Kamali, uh, I know he's working with um Jared, to make sure that uh they get the information, so that way they could bring it up, so that way we know specifically what the amount is. And, you know, because it has to start in the spring. So whether we could pour part, part of the funds like um, between the grant and part of the funds from this first two point seven, and the other part from the other, the other wire gets developed, that's something that we could potentially also do, uh, Luke, so that way we don't feel like, you know, um, the money started running out. So that way we don't feel like, you know, um the money started running out and we don't know um, if there's gonna be any additional funds available. But I do feel like the parks are something that we need to address and this is um a very good opportunity to be able to do that. Alright, so that's my take, but uh Jared, Jimmy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm uh just wanna, I'm sorry, excuse me. Uh I just wanna follow up with Luke said on parks. I mean, you, you know, we have a generally very constrained budget. We have an opportunity to uh improve and address issues with a lot of our um small city-owned green spaces. And um at the same time, address uh, you know, continue to address a lot of issues with that green space. Which is uh relatively scarce, as you've, as you've mentioned, so um, you know, fully in support of um, of uh, of that allocation and approach. Thanks.
Thank you, Jared. Jimmy?
Just uh making sure that we have like legislative amendments for the next meeting, so we can go from blue to green. It's not green until we actually, my understanding, approve it at a legislative meeting, so.
So Luke, can you add an extra line that just says um, moving forward to legislative meeting on December seven? Maybe that will help um alleviate, create another color if you choose to. But I think that at least for, yeah, so that way we could differentiate between things that we voted on support. And things that we, we cannot vote in this meeting, but we have reached a consensus to move in forward to the legislative session. And it sounds like we're very supportive. Okay, yellow? I thought yellow was something else. Yellow was like comeback for feedback or something.
No, that was orange.
Oh, wow.
You can do a different color.
I was like, that's orange? That's fine, um. Yeah, put a blue so that way you know it's like, it's gearing and then you could do your little column, says December seven, or add it in your period. So that way, when we're working on the budget amendment with Mr. Kamali and um, and Melissa, we make sure we address um the ones that we discussed. So we got the parks um there, hopefully we could get at least some uh cost estimate. And like I said, we go with split funds between this um, this money and the next one that's coming twelve months later. Or whatever the case is to um expense whatever else is needed. Need cost estimate. You type pretty fast, Luke.
Yep, very. Mavis Beacon teaches typing. I think that was the program I got when I was in school. Okay, that's, so those are the two that are blue. Okay, anything else, folks?
Yeah, the social service coordinator. That was the other one, the other one that uh, that we uh, we agree.
Sorry, I'm scrolling and giving everybody a headache here.
You went too fast.
Right there, um.
It's another, I think it's another row, Luke.
No, it's that one is, that's the one it is.
This is like a crisis, oh, okay, so maybe we should divide it to, cause one was like a crisis manager, which is different than the social worker.
Yeah.
The same thing, doesn't matter.
I mean, she's, I mean, she's technically doing everything right now, but I'm hoping that once we get the clarity and the, the bullet points. When it comes to the highest bill grant that we got awarded with highest bill Brentwood and us, it will get a bit of like um. It will allow for us to be able to fund some of the things that we need to and not necessarily the whole position. Uh because we are sharing uh some costs, but some uh quite a few of the stuff the grant is covering. Uh the other thing I will, I will ask for is the vaccine incentives. If um, even if we put, I, I believe they had put allocated, I think it was like ten thousand dollars. And this is not just for one event, but multiple events, but I think we're in the sixty-four percentile of people that um. That have been vaccinated for the city, so we're still really behind.
So one thing I do wanna mention on the social worker, I know Mr. Kamali said seventy-six to eighty thousand for the position. Since we already have it as a halftime position, Mr. Kamali, you're gonna have to figure out what the difference is. Uh because that will be the budget amendment. We won't need a budget amendment for the full seventy-six to eighty thousand. Because we've already allocated it as a halftime position, so we just need that difference.
Definitely, I'll do that.
Um and I've got that allocated to December seventh work session or legislative session.
And yeah, and the other one will be the vaccine incentives.
Okay. I, I'll speak for myself. I might need more information on what everybody else is doing for the vaccine incentives. Before I could give a vote on this, but that's just me.
So it's basically putting money aside, so that way when we pair up with um our various partner, with issues like Prejudice County Health. We could provide um incentives to give um, to give out to people to encourage them, you know, once they take the vaccine, they could get a twenty-five dollar car. Or a voucher to one of our stores. So what you're looking at right now is basically the, the funding. And then uh Mr. Kamali and, and I could work on the, on the details. Um and on Saturday, it's actually, if you guys wanna go and see it, how it works, Saturday, uh the three cities are gonna be doing it. Uh but obviously, I, I, you know, we hadn't allocated any funds, so we didn't join in. But uh they have put at least five thousand dollars, I believe, each city, to be able to like maximize um how many people are being vaccinated. Cause their numbers um, they're, they're working on increasing their numbers as well. But the reality is, is like, our numbers are really bad. And um so far, we have, we have, I don't even think we have offered water to the residents to like take vaccines, right? And um we cannot continue doing that. At certain point, we need to also um make sure that this program is running. And um we've been fortunate to like pair up with uh Joe in the past, uh with the Nature Center. Um and with um county council member Danny Taveras and Pidgey County Health. So that's what it is. The incentive fund is just like be able to come up with a plan of incentives that you could give to the community to encourage them to take the vaccine. So it's not, it's not a big um, it's not a big proposal, it's like, I think ten thousand dollars uh for us to cover like various expenses. To in- incentivize them.
I just, I mean, I'm, I'm really supportive of that and the food stuff. I think at some point, and put this to Mr. Kamali, you know, our residents are gonna wanna know, what did we do with five-point-four million? I think we're gonna have to have a pretty good account for food that we gave out, you know, a hundred Thanksgiving. For exactly the amount that we did this, so we have actually some accountability. Uh with what, you know, what, what the money has been used for. And one of people say, yes, we should do this and also kind of, you know, kind of make sure that when we have a council meeting. Maybe even I have an update that we've already spent so much money and we've done these seven things. I think, you know, people will wanna know that from us.
Yeah, and I think that based in this agreement, uh Jimmy, as a matter of fact, the, the conversation that I had with Mr. Kamali, and I mentioned this to you guys as well. There is gonna be a webpage in the city that describes the various people, organizations that we have give funding for. And how much funding we have uh given uh to. So that's not changing. The other thing I wanna make sure is clear, although I'm running the operation end, uh the funding's being approved by Mr. Kamali. And it's the city who's like taking care of that side of it. So um just wanna make it abundantly clear that this has been um, um my job has daily been working with the various partners. Getting the volunteers together, working with the staff in whatever um help they need from me. Um but um, so yeah, so every penny, like I said, um is accounted for and um who we're getting the stuff for. And um how much money's being invested in this, but uh yeah, it's, it's a massive um, it's a massive effort. And um I definitely wanna take this point of privilege to thank the volunteers and thank the staff. Because um they've been doing um outstanding work and, and stepping up and providing um support to the staff. Because if not, we could easily have gotten like fifteen staff members to do the work that the volunteers are, are doing. Aside from the four um, uh staff members that um, that have, that are, are, are leading this effort. But um if not, like this will cost even more, because it takes a lot of um, a lot of time and effort to get this done. Um it's, it's been a challenge. I think that when we hear about food shortage, I think sometimes um, we don't realize how bad it is. Um even around us, but it's, it's um, it's a, it's a lot, yeah. Uh so I will put it uh there, and that's the reason why I would like to. And then Mr. Kamali and I um could work on a plan, I will work with the schools, so that way um, you know, if we could pair up with them. Since they're having a vaccine clinic, and then uh we could incentivize um the, the people going um, um it will help. But the reality is, is like our numbers need to increase and by the power of will of like, you know, goodwill is not happening. Um so we're gonna do as much as we can to get, you know, to work with our partners to help. But we also need to um put in at least something to- towards this. And like I mentioned, it's like Saturday, the three cities are gonna have it, so if you guys have more or less a question what it looks like. You guys will get to see it uh first hand on, on what they're doing. Um they actually um shared the flyer with me if I wanna invite our, our residents. But I believe our residents might not qualify for the things that they might be putting up, cause they're putting money um from their ARPA funds to get this done.
Okay, and is there, is there a cost that I, did you, did you say ten K?
Ten thousand, yeah.
And then is there consensus on this one, folks?
I'm supportive.
Yeah, I'm some, I'm supportive as well.
So that one.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um so that brings a running total. Fifty. Two hundred, so that adds two hundred plus Spring Park. Um so that would bring us up to one point four.
Luke, can you put in a different category? Because remember, until it's voted on the seven, it hasn't been approved.
I can.
Thank you.
Potential. Point two mil, plus Spring Park. Okay, so we could be down to four million, so. I'll just keep that italicized and you can do your own math in your head. Okay. And I'll do that as that.
You have potential allocated, you said one mil? Okay, that's for the ones that are in blue?
Point two, yep.
Oh no, okay, cause I was talking about the po- one point M that you have in the top.
Oh, that's the um, oh, that should be one point two, sorry.
That's what I was like, wait a minute, that's not, that's not adding up, alright. Okay, so is there anything else you guys wanna discuss on this point item? Cause time check, it is nine eighteen. And I don't think we're not even halfway, we might be halfway or, or still through the agenda.
That's all, I can email this back to everybody.
Um, thank you, Luke.
Yep.
He's seen uh city manager and city clerk to make sure they're all like in the same loop as well.
Yep, I'll do that right now.
Thank you, Luke.
Yep.
Okay, Melissa, can you put the agenda up in the screen, please? Thank you so much. Moving on to item number eight, police. Police um review and advisory board, um it probably should have read um, police advisory review. Um the mayor and council will have a discussion of the process to solicit members to the police um, the police advisory board. Uh Jimmy, you put this item in the agenda?
I, I think it is correctly described, uh, uh let me share if I can find it. Nope, okay, I'll stop sharing. Anyway, the uh mayor and council uh passed in May. The police review and advisory board, um the uh, we haven't implemented it. Uh we had a discussion with the attorney who said that, you know, advised us that we could move ahead. And uh announce, you know, uh announce or solicit. Uh queues for it, uh the reading the resolution and. I mean, look, hold on a second, let me find it if I can find it. Now, let me see if I can share it now. Here we go. So this is, can people see this? This is the uh thing that was passed in May and it calls for uh five people, uh two from each ward. And one person from the apartment complexes, uh and for two years, uh I could email it to everybody. Uh but uh, we talked to the, I mean, the attorney wrote us that. Uh we, there's no reason not to move ahead and what, what I was gonna suggest is that we actually move ahead. And uh advertise for appointments, uh and then after the uh we vote appointments. At the actual group meet with the attorney to go over what it can and what, you know, what are the parameters of it. But I think it's, you know, somewhat, I think it's responsible for us, since it did pass to move ahead on this. Uh there are two representatives from each ward and one from the apartment complexes. Uh and there is a list of duties. Uh and I'd be glad to help draft the city like a, a way to uh announce. It and what the kind of parameters it are and uh have a deadline of like, you know, you know, a month to six weeks. For people to uh, who are interested in, in being on the board. And then after, my suggestion is after we make appointments, that the board actually meet with the city attorney. To go over uh what actually uh are the responsibilities or not. Um I, I'll, I can email this to everybody to look over in more detail uh what it should do. But it, you know, talks about investig- you know, ga- investigating things by, permitted by law, quarterly reports. Uh and things like that. So my proposal is to, A, I volunteer to help draft. Uh uh announcement, soliciting people to uh volunteers to be on the board. And B, uh that once we get recommendations and make appointments and the board is created. That they actually meet with the attorney to talk about exactly what the board should, shouldn't do and stuff like that. That's all.
Okay, Jared, followed by Luke?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't have any disagreement with that pathway for, I mean, a lot of this came together before I, before I came on council. Um so, I mean, I, I support and uh trust y'all's approach on this.
Yeah, double check if that's the latest version, cause my signature's not, not on it and Scott wasn't on it. So um I think the li- the last version it had, it has both of our signatures. Uh Luke?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good with getting those advertisements out. Um I think that makes good sense. Uh so, thank you, Jimmy, for getting this on the agenda and moving it forward.
So I definitely would like to clarify what our lawyer did say. She said there's no objection. However, um she also said there's no hurry for us to um appoint. At the same time, she also said there is part of the legislation that we're gonna have to address as council. Uh because they no longer apply based on the law that was uh recently passed. And there are gonna be um other changes coming down the pipeline potentially uh next season. So if anybody is interested in this position, please be aware that um there are changes coming. So um read through it, it's a big thick piece of document. Uh but council is gonna have to um address what's no longer um standing based on the law. And that's something that Elise is gonna have to, I think there's like one or two different things that are no longer um, that no longer hold true. So she's gonna have to uh work with us. The only hesitation I, I had is like, I wish we could work on the document before we could elect the people. So um, so that way we at least um give him a fair chance of like joining a committee and knowing what it's about. And what, what it does apply and what does not apply. But if you guys, I would like to move forward to like ten thirty making an, an, an announcement. Um for, you know, in December, I get, you guys could go ahead and um, and start working on it. Uh Mr. Kamali, um because of the. and start working on it, uh, Mister Kamali, um, because of the sensibility of this group, um, the city man, the city clerk, um, what's it called, uh, the city attorney will be, uh, advising, uh, this board, just like the ethics commission, just like the board of elections, so bear in mind, um, also when you're, uh, working on your budget or working on your numbers, that that's gonna be an additional, um, uh, costs associated with it, um, and who's gonna be the, the liaison from, um, from the staff, um, point of view, um, uh, whether it's like the city clerk, just like for the board of elections, for the ethics, like your point of, um, your point of reference for it, so those will be my, my feedback on it, but, um, we cannot vote on here and it's something that's already been approved, but since you guys would like to move for it, then I strongly suggest this document go into work session on December. Uh, council be ready to start, um, to start working on it to figure out what applies and doesn't. And Mister Kamali, if you could send it to Elisa to figure out what no longer applies, so that way we could, um, edit this document before, um, before we even, um, appoint anybody, um, to the board, it would definitely help, um, because there's about two or three things that I believe changed, um, at least two that she mentioned. And more are gonna be coming, um, in the next, uh, maybe three to four months. So that's the reason why she said she's, she, it's, we, we shouldn't be in a hurry to appoint anybody until like something is more solidified. Alright, okay, any other comment, um, hold on, Jimmy. Um, any other comment, um, let me know if you guys need to, hold on, Jimmy, do you guys need to go to a round two? Um, I'll open the floor right now, go ahead, Jimmy.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to wait, I mean, I think, uh, you know, I mean, this is gonna be an ongoing changing, uh, and, uh, I mean, I think, you know, the council and the people wanted to have this board and that, you know, I'd be willing to draft an announcement and send it to the attorney to see, uh, kind of what, what, how it should be described as advertised and the attorney can kind of give us guidance and counsel about what should be changed, I think if we kind of, this thing is gonna be continuing to be changed over the next year and, uh, you know, I mean, the, the counter vote on this and, uh, you know, we don't have to wait, but I'm not sure anything's gonna change. Uh, you know, things gonna change maybe in the legislative session, but you know, I think, you know, the attorney can meet with the board and decide, you know, what should or shouldn't be changed, I think we can, you know, draft, uh, an announcement and send it to the attorney to kind of adequately describe what the, what the, what the board is supposed to be doing and how, you know, things may change in the future. I'm not sure why we have to hold off.
I don't, I don't think nobody's saying to hold out, Jimmy, my understanding is everybody's saying move forward with. So unless, unless you're the only one that's saying hold off, I think everybody said move forward with it.
Is it alright to draft an announcement and then send it to the attorney?
Hold on one second, since we're a second round, I'm gonna go through all the other ones, and if they see their time, they see their time, Jared?
I'll save my time.
Thank you, Luke?
Yep, I, I'm good with drafting an announcement, thanks, Jimmy, thanks, Selena.
Thank you, um, so Melissa, can you please make sure, uh, this item is put on the work session?
Why, why does that have to be in the work session?
Jimmy, I need to finish and it's not any good if you're cutting me off, cause you're not even hearing what I'm saying. Uh, Melissa, can you please add the resolution to the work session? Um, put a marker right there for it to be for the December work session for us to review it so that we could get the latest update on, on what applies or not from the lawyer, so just put it, um, just put a marker to add it to the December work session. Okay? Got it?
I, I just.
Thank you, Melissa.
That's not what we agreed to, we agreed to that we would do it now.
It's two different points, Jimmy, if, I, I'm trying to be polite, but it's like you're not listening, it's two different points. The council has agreed to move forward with the announcement, you could draft it and sho- and share with the lawyer and then we're gonna get feedback. A separate note is for me request for an item to be the agenda when it comes to what applies to this resolution and what no longer applies, so we could edit if needed. So it's two different things, what you're asking and what I'm asking, my asking does not contradict what you're asking.
I, I, okay, that's fine, so, we can do both, is what you're saying.
Yes. So, council, we are, we cannot vote on this, but we seem to be in agreement to move forward, so Jimmy will work with, uh, Mister Kamali's team uh, to draft this, send it to the lawyers, so that we could be put out through the, through the city. Um, and Mister Kamali, if you need any feedback, obviously, you're always, the, the city lawyer is always accessible, um, to you a hundred percent. If anybody, like, you're the one that could reach out to them as well directly. So, um, saying that, if we have no other, um, no other more feedback on item number A, I'd like to move to item number nine. And as a time check, it is nine thirty-one. Uh, per council rules, our meeting should not exceed two hours and thirty minutes. And if do exceed, you guys need to make sure, um, you got, you, you need to be fully conscious, we're going over two and a half hours, okay? Um, saying that, would you guys like to proceed?
Yes.
Luke, Jared, Jimmy?
Yep, go ahead.
Yes, from Jared.
Thank you, Jared, Jimmy?
Are we gonna give what, like, what do you, what is the actual action to amend it, to go more than, we don't have too much more to go on? So.
Um, usually the council rules, the, the council rules will, will allow us to like, it allows for us not to go over two and a half hours, because, um, it's a lot of time, right? So usually you bring it up and if the council says proceed, we'll proceed for like maybe an hour more if need be uh, or thirty minutes and then do another time check, so that we'll figure out what, what we wanna do moving forward. Uh, the idea why this was instilled was because like, you know, I mentioned earlier, me and Luke have been at one and at, uh, one thirty in the morning meetings. Because meetings went so long and after a certain point, nobody did a check in on any of us and they just kept going and at certain points, you just lose you just lose the, the information thread. Alright, seeing that you guys are in agreement to continue moving forward, we're moving on to item number nine. Review and update the rolling agenda, mayor and council will review and update the rolling agenda. Um, there is, uh, I think Melissa, you have the rolling agenda, can you put it on the screen, please? Melissa? Mister Kamali?
I think she's trying to bring it up, mayor.
Thank you, I'm not sure why some of the boxes are turning completely black on my end, so I couldn't see, I, I couldn't see her at all. Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Melissa, go ahead, uh, Jimmy, you go, went ahead and, um, Brad, can you explain what a rolling agenda is to the committee member? Go ahead.
I'm wondering, since there is a lot of things on the agenda, rather than, uh, go over it today, maybe people could look over it and, uh, at the next meeting kind of figure out things that we really may, there are things that are, I mean, I wasn't there on council when some of those were done. Maybe the things we should delete or make it like, uh, put in a different section. I had added a few other things, uh, to my thoughts about it, but maybe we should, you know, kind of, I'm not sure we wanna do it today, uh, but maybe, uh, and I've, can you expand it a little bit, uh, Melissa?
Jimmy, this is like, um, August nineteen twenty twenty last year. Luke, can you check on your emails and I'll check on mine to see if there was something recent in that, cause I thought we reviewed like, less than a year ago.
I thought I sent a May one, but, but even whatever it is, I mean, maybe we should see what we can get off of it and also have like, uh, another column about one we would like to see discussed. Uh, so some of these things seem to be kind of things we're gonna be discussing and things like that, but, I mean, I've always felt when I was in council that having a rolling agenda at least enabled us to see that, you know, so things didn't get lost.
So I will say at least the first one needs to be deleted, cause our priority number one, we completed it, we have a full-time city manager. So Mister Kamali, you can go nowhere. Alright, so that could, that could be deleted, uh, but yeah, let's look through it and I'll check if there's a, there's a, Luke, if you could also help me with that as well in your emails to see if we could find anything, because I believe we reviewed it less than, even if it was in May, I think we, you know, like, this is the August one, right? But I think it was reviewed less than a year ago.
When I saw.
I sent something, it was March, but maybe.
Go ahead, Luke.
It was done in March, but this is the document.
Okay.
Luke, go ahead, the floor's yours.
No, yeah, the, wha- whatever we, I, I did do a search when I saw those emails from Brian trying to help us out, and I think that last one that Melissa has, I think that's, that one from March was, I, I didn't find an older or newer one than what, what I saw floating around.
I'll check it, I'll check it, cause I think some of the things look new, but some of these things, I'm, I think we, we removed them, so this might not have been the last saved one. Who knows, I mean, that, that rolling agenda, and I'll tell you, this is a massive document, this is the reason why we usually discuss it in work sessions, right? Because it's a lot to get through it, it's a good twenty-five minutes to get through it. Alright, so take a look at it, um, Melissa, can you put it for the December, um, and it is a leaving document, um, please don't feel like if your name is attached to it, if, or something's there, you, you're bounded for the rest of your life to follow it, I mean, if that was the case, like, we could go like generation of council members and mayors searching for like their lost rolling agendas, um. So check it out and figure out if you guys need to add something, um, delete something, update something, um, please contribute to the document, I guess that's the overall, um, to this and put it in the December. I think the December agenda might be the twenty-seven. So keep that in mind, uh, council, in, in case you guys would like to change the date. Cause that's, um, very, very in the middle of, um, December, I think it's twenty-seven, what, when is the, the work?
No, the work session is twenty-first.
Twenty-first, yeah.
May I suggest also that, uh, if it's alright, that we add things at the end that are just to the end of the rolling agenda?
Uh, yeah. No, that's what I said. So that's, that's what I said, like, you know, as, as, as collective as a body, add, delete, edit, um, and you're not bounded for life to be able to make sure those things are there. I found it kind of useful, but in reality, I think like, we spend more time reviewing it than like the building things that we get to do aside from what's there and suddenly become very updated very quickly. Um, okay, so if anybody else has nothing to add to this item, I would like to move to the next item that, in the agenda. Uh, council, move forward with the next item?
Yep.
Just as long as you shake your head, I, I could see you, I think most of the time, alright, thank you. Oh, this is the item Melissa has been waiting for. Presentation of the October nineteen twenty twenty-one work session and the November's O two twenty twenty-one legislative mini minutes. So Melissa submitted them, both sets, um, council, please review them. Send, um, if you guys could please at least send a message to Melissa saying like, approve or you're fine with them? So she knows you at least like look at them, because she always asks us me like, do, do you think they, um, I'm waiting on their reply and I'm all like, if they don't reply by the deadline, then consider it, um, supportive of your, of your great work, so Melissa, thank you for working on the minutes. Uh, it's very appreciative, I, I know that when, um, when we discussed it even with Kamali, like, you know, the ten was like for the minutes to be given to us, like, um, and, and continuously meaning to make sure like we were on top of them. So council, can you please, uh, send any changes to Melissa? No later than, um, next Tuesday, because this week, uh, Friday, the reality is like, we're all gonna be, um, we're waking up at, uh, five thirty in the morning to receive the frozen items at six o'clock in the morning. So Tuesday, please submit whatever, uh, changes you have, um, to Melissa. Um, if not, this item's moving forward to voting for approval on our legislative session, uh, on December seventh, okay? Agree? Melissa, anything else to add about it? I would think, no, Melissa is like throwing a party with the minutes right now, alright. Okay, uh, thank you so much. Now we're moving on to item number, agenda proposal to go into closed session, Jimmy, can you read the whole entire paragraph, please?
According to the annotated code of Maryland, the mayor and city council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland have the statutory authority to close a session under general provisions, Article three dash three oh five B, for the reasons of section one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, officials over which the public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals. The mayor and city council proposed to go into closed session on Tuesday, November sixteen, two thousand twenty-one, to have a discussion on personnel.
Alright, thank you, so you have heard the proposal to go into closed session, uh, are we all in agreement to go into closed session, council? Alright, seeing that we're in agreement, there is no objection, we are gonna be moving to closed session, so members of the public on the December seven meeting, um, Vice Mayor Jimmy Tarlo will be reading the summary of the meeting. Um, it's only a one item, and here he read, um, the full description on why we'll go into closed session. Okay, uh, Mister Kamali, uh, and to the whole entire staff, Alma, I see Chief is also here. Um, Jared as well, um, Melissa, thank you guys so much and, um, I'll be seeing you guys tomorrow. You're like, bye, take care, thank you, Chief, uh, good conference, Chief. And to the residents, thank you so much for joining us, I see Daniel Cruz is here, hi, Daniel. Alright, have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Mayor.
Bye.
Bye, Mister, uh, Mister Kamali, I'll, I'll call you.